You are watching XS La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the December 11, 2023 meeting of the La Porte County Council's special meeting. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaporte county.org.
I'm just about to back that and call the special meeting of La Porte County Council on December 11, 2023 to order. We are going to do a pledge of allegiance and immediately afterwards, please remain standing for a moment of silence for Joe Winskey. Steve, sorry, Steve Winskey.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
As we just had a moment of silence, many people in the room, Mr. Minnie that was just here, his father is a longtime teacher, coach, and assistant principal of La Porte High School. Has gone through tough situation and Craig has had some good news today, so we should all keep him in our prayers.
Thank you for adding, positive. Before we approve the agenda, we have the following adjustments.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, please.
Councilman.
Little Councilman Novak.
Loud and authoritative. Here.
Councilman Cunningham.
Present.
Councilman Yagelski. Councilman Yagelski.
Not present.
Councilman Keel.
Present.
Councilman Mullenauer.
Present.
Councilman Karanka.
Present.
And Councilman Rosenbaum.
Present.
Six of seven present.
Thank you, sir. Before we do the approval of the agenda, we have the following changes. Immediately, we're going to have the approval of the minutes of the La Porte County Council Budget Workshop of September 18, 2023. Also followed by the approval of the minutes of the La Porte County Council Budget Workshop, October 2, 2023. I will have copies for you, sir. We are scratching the La Porte County Surveyor's Office. He had asked for it to be removed and there was, there may have been some other items that were appropriated, but they've also been asked to be removed. So there's no other additions at this time.
Motion to approve is amended.
Did you have, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve with those amendments with two other additions. One, discussion of the salary ordinance as the last item for the agenda after budget discussion. And then also to add public comment back on after the approval of the agenda. That would be my motion.
Sag it. After, just after approval of the minutes.
Yeah, after approval of the minutes, add public comment.
Do public comment. And the last item would be the.
Discussion of the salary ordinance.
I'm sorry.
Oh, also, I think we discussed previously moving the insurance rate approval for 2024 to, is it just after the 1782 notice?
Yes.
Yes, throw that in there as well.
I was gonna do that during the meeting, but it's fine. Any other comment or any other amendments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any nays? Approved. We move on to a public comment. So if there's anybody in the public that would like to make a comment at this time, please keep it brief.
You want to do minutes first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have my notes here, minutes. The first set of minutes for approval.
Are for the. September 18, 2023, La Porte County Council Budget Workshop Minutes.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yes.
Mr. Auditor, are these the minutes that you prepared?
These are not the minutes he prepared, these are the minutes that we agreed to with the legal counsel that this is the minimum amount that was required. We did not ask the auditor to prepare those minutes. This, the minutes were misleading, there were errors in them. And so therefore, we decided to go and make it, to turn it out to be simple minutes so that as we, during a workshop, the discussion is not always factual. And we didn't want people to be misled because even this week, somehow somebody found out something from those minutes. And Mr. Karanka was asked something about it. And so therefore, that information was wrong and incorrect. And we're trying to prevent that lack, the incorrect information. It is available for anybody to watch. And so therefore, if they want to see it and get their full intent rather than just getting from a written document.
Mr. DiMartino, is that your interpretation as well?
Anyone on the agenda?
Well, you could have a memorandum or minutes. This covers, this has the name, the names of the people that were there, the times, the topics that were discussed, so.
So you feel like it includes all matters proposed, discussed, and decided?
I went through the minutes and I actually put headings in there.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something, if I may.
It's a council meeting.
We, we take statutory exception to your creating your own minutes and we believe that's against the law. Sir, we haven't seen the minutes, we haven't been able to review the minutes. We are the documenter of your meetings, you are not. And it's inappropriate what you did, in my opinion. We offered to have shorter, we offered to have shorter minutes.
To your liking. They didn't come to.
We offered to.
On the agenda.
That if you wanted.
Let's get back to business.
So. We're gonna complete, we're gonna, we have a motion in the floor.
We will not post these minutes to the, to the, to the.
You don't, you don't want to follow, we won't approve, that's your problem.
We are the secretary of law of the council.
We really might.
Lot of order, point of order, let's stop, let's stop.
Let's just, I'm not gonna fall into your trap. I'm not gonna fall into your trap.
Stop.
We're not gonna fall into your trap.
Stop, it's our statutory authority.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Aye. Please do a roll call vote.
It was a four-two vote.
Councilman Cunningham.
Aye. I gave the call that night.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
I don't care who, I don't care who does them.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilman Keel.
Nay.
Councilman Mullenauer?
Nay.
Close three and three.
Councilman Karanka, Councilman Karanka. So there are four ayes and two nays.
May I, may I, I just want to add. In the future, I would like to see the auditor's office do it, maybe with the new, the way it's done because they're official record keeper of the council. So instead of us producing our own, I would like to see the auditor's office go back to doing the minutes.
Could you pass this down to that end so it can be signed? Now we have the minutes of the workshop for October 2, 2023. Anybody like to make a motion to approve?
We got this one approved, this is the one we're doing.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second for the October 2 meetings?
Second.
Workshop.
Workshop, yep. This was, we had a workshop prior to the meeting. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any nays?
Nay.
Motion carries.
May I ask a question about the agenda? Did, didn't we add the insurance rate approval after budget?
We moved it from, we're moving it down.
From the top, alright.
Yeah, because in case, and if you would pass that down so it could be signed and sent back, of course. Okay, so now we get to go to public comment. Anybody in the public would like to comment? And if you're on Zoom, please put a hand up and then we can call on you. One more time, anybody like to make a public comment? Seeing no one, public comment is now closed. We're moving into the special meeting appropriations, transfers, and requests. The first is La Porte County reporter, recorder. This is a one-time event for us, you don't need to come up, you could if you like, but. That's requesting statutorily allowed fund transfer from the elected funds, official training fund 1217 to recorders perpetuation fund in the amount of $75,000. I'd like to feed a little bit of information to everybody. Currently, there's about $92,000. We spend a little, we get reimbursed in there, gets funded about $13,000 a year. And we spend anywhere from 13 to 15,000 in any given year. Now, would anybody like to do?
Mr. President is my question.
Sure.
If we don't transfer it, it's just gonna stay in the elected officials' training fund, correct?
Yes, it will stay there, however, it'll be built up, you know, we'll have a, be a while to use it. And if it goes to the perpetuation fund, then it can be used to offset budgetary items.
And the recorder's office.
Which means that it comes away from the general fund. Because they do pay for several of their employees.
What's the balance in the recorder's perpetuation fund today?
Ninety-something.
A little bit over $1 million.
That's my point exactly. Why are we transferring money out of the elected officials' training fund?
If I could answer that.
He will.
Yep. You know, at some point in time, we, the way it looks to me, we ought to be training our elected officials a lot more. That's part of the problem. So why would we transfer less than $100,000 to the recorder's perpetuation fund? When there's a million dollars in the recorder's perpetuation fund?
There's only five people that can be paid out of the elected officials' training fund. And she might have it memorized better than me, but assessor, recorder, auditor, treasurer, and surveyor.
Again, council, send the council.
Only the council, only when it's an AIC meeting, so not always. So it's really not a ton of money each year is, is what that amounts to.
We recommend a favor with this, it increases your budget flexibility in the future.
That money is basically trapped there. This is one-time only deal, counties who have huge amount of access funds in that. There's one that has 188,000. They'll never use it for training, they went to the state and said, please let us clean this up, so the money is not trapped there. At the last budget meeting, you were begging me to pay for one more salary. The 75,000 will cover that extra salary for more than just the one year you asked me to do it. So why keep it there?
Give us that assurance this evening that you'll pick up that other employee.
I already did.
Thank you.
Yeah.
How much does that leave us in the training fund?
I believe there will be like 14 or 15,000 and then.
15,000 every year?
Goes, so each year the.
There'll be 17,000 left over approximately from the numbers I was given. And then we add 13,000 a year, so we'll have 30,000 next year for the first.
And if we absolutely had to, we could come back, I mean, you could still pick up some of those other ones. Couldn't you? Couldn't you train, could we transfer back the other way if we had to?
No.
I don't know if you could, but I don't see that ever happening, honestly.
This is the last year that we can actually even do this.
Replenished every single month.
This is the one-time shot.
Right, right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's it, you know, if we don't move it out, it will be trapped there, God knows how.
And how much does it generate a year?
At least 12, 13,000.
So if we spend 15 a year.
Wait, really, really, it's been 13, but I just did an estimate of 13 to 15 with inflation.
Zero. And if we have a year where a bunch of people go.
You're still not going to run out because like I said, we're leaving a certain amount and then we keep adding to it continuously.
But we're only leaving like 15,000?
Seventeen.
Right, well, 17 plus the 13, that's 20.
Thirty, thirty.
30,000 will never use at all for training, there's no.
While we can pick a number we want, we don't have to transfer.
If we don't spend 30 in a year, next year, another 13,000 gets added. So it just keeps growing.
Seems like we had a lot of people going to conferences this year. Councilmen, I mean, other elected officials, commissioners aren't part of this?
Nope, not commissioners and the council can only use it for AIC conference, so we're limited use.
In short, we looked at some prior, I looked a few years back, the numbers were in the single-digit thousands that were spent, I'm good with it.
Yeah.
I guess.
So it really, it's, it seemed, it's like shame to leave it just sitting there because there's no way we spend it that much on training.
Thank you.
Okay, what would the council like to do?
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. Moving on to the fairgrounds, management and events corp.
May I?
Yes, please.
So this is the auditor's office, the county, and FMEC had an account there. And we were paying some payroll, so we had one account there and there was money from some rentals that went in there. And there was also monies from the county, the council that put appropriations in there. We kept them separate on paper. That fund became overdrawn when no more funds went into the account because of the ARP. We had a fund inside the ARP for the things. So that fund is 25,052 and 71 cents difference. So FMEC out of their, because FMEC is a, is a non-for-profit. It's not tied to the county, it's a non-for-profit, put together by the county to run the fairgrounds. They have a checking account where they keep deposits and different things, and so there's some monies in there. But they wanted to make sure that their account was right, so they sent a check to the auditor's office for 25,052 and 71 cents. And this is just to reconcile that, to make it zero. Did it cover that pretty good? Good. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Motion carries. We move on to La Porte County Coroner. Requesting additional appropriation from Riverboat Wind Tax, John P., for additional service and, service and charges, toxicology bills, the amount to $10,000. Immediately at the last meeting, she had additional bills that she couldn't even cover for the month of December. And so therefore, had asked us to add to our special meeting this $10,000. What would the council like to do?
Motion to approve.
Out of?
Out of, those are clearance sheets. Out of ARP.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
So it's a four-two, motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We move on to La Porte County Board of Commissioners. Requesting additional appropriation, Riverboat, Wind Tax, or ARP for, it was for the repairs of a vehicle, it was a van, I believe, for $30,425.
This was a repair from an accident?
I don't have the detail, I, I.
Is there supporting stuff in the packet?
I think it was just an email request.
Just an email of some ledgers.
It was due.
Does the auditor's office have further insight into this?
I think, I feel like the email that was shared only said Diane had said that it was for a police vehicle. It was repairs, oh, she said for a wrecked vehicle, so no, I guess that's all that I have.
It was done at La Porte Chrysler, is all I have here.
Why do they need an additional appropriation for this?
First of all, because they didn't have the funds for it. So they sent it through into rainy day where it was removed from erroneously. So it needs to be taken out of that and put into the appropriation that you give.
How was it paid out on a rainy day?
Say again?
How was it paid out of rainy day?
Because that's how it was submitted.
Well, we didn't approve out of rainy day.
Correct.
So.
So the POs come to us and until now, the, they don't know what's approved and what isn't. So we started making a list so that our accounts payable knows what's approved from everything.
So we're not sure if it's a difference of an insurance settlement versus them having to get a new car to replace a car that was damaged?
I don't know what it's for, but in any fund that they have, there was no money for it. So it should have been an additional appropriation before they presented it.
Motion table for lack of information. Second.
Third. We have a motion to table and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is tabled.
And a request that we get additional information.
One follow-up, is this gonna create an accounting issue that if it's been paid out of rainy day and it's, that expense is already been paid there, is this gonna create a problem going into next year?
I mean, it's, it's not negative, so that's okay, but it'd be nice if it was out of rainy day, but then it'd be negative somewhere else.
Needs to be fixed.
But it can't be fixed until it's appropriated, so yeah. Once you approve it, we can fix it.
It was tabled and it was voted on, right?
Less we want to untable.
And that's fine too, I mean, if somebody's got a solution.
Okay, we move on to, Miss Davis claims appropriation reduction from rainy day 1186 for the remaining balance of the following appropriations. We have a group of line items now to exceed on each one of those line items. They totaled $2,330,032.99. What we're doing is reversing that with the restrictions, when the items went out to bid and therefore, they don't follow those restrictions and those amounts.
So therefore, the $2,330,000 would be applied to anything with the water damage in the complex?
Yes. And what we're receiving here separately is just a status of where things are on these, on the five floors, on the three, on the floors. And if you haven't had the opportunity to go, go there, please make arrangements. You'll see a lot of work done on the fifth floor, a little less on the fourth and even more, and a little less on the third, but walls are up.
So this is just a lot, instead of it being restricted to the one, two, three, four, five items, it is applied towards, the unused balance of it. Is going to be applied towards anything in the water damaged.
Yeah, and we're, and we're going to put the money back in with it being unrestricted and.
So it's not a new appropriation, it's just a reappropriation?
It's a reversal. And if you want to do the reappropriation where it does not have the restrictions, we can do both at the same time and the same amount. What would the council like to do?
Motion to.
Do them one at a time?
I'm looking where it says reversal on my.
It's a minus sign.
I see that, but, okay. Motion to approve both.
Would you mind clarifying the motion just to?
Motion to, motion to reverse the 2.2 million, 330,320.99 that was restricted. And re-appropriated it to 2,330,320.99 to anything pertaining to the water damage in the complex.
Thank you. So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. I want to make sure I got this clear. We've already spent 4,943,463 in the rainy day fund for the complex, correct? And this is part of that number? This is gonna be 2 million on top of it.
No, no.
Part of that, not included. We're just, yeah.
We're just removing the restrictions so the bills can be paid.
Yeah. There's things like flooring and other things that weren't allowed in, that weren't in the original motion that need to be paid, that are covered by the insurance that we need to pay. Is that accurate, Mr. Attorney? Yes.
Any other discussion?
Alright, Mike, here's my question.
Sure.
Why is this an additional appropriation? Because we're, we're, we unappropriated it, look at the negative, I'm just, this is an accounting thing with the auditor.
To clarify what Earl asked, it is actually the, the 4 million that he's talking about does not include that 2.3 million.
That's what I thought.
Because the 2.3 million has not been spent. But what they're saying is it's not a new appropriation because these funds were already appropriated.
I understand that, but it's still gonna.
I have, I have a question, no.
It's not.
Also, also part of the money that was spent out of that account, wasn't that from insurance proceeds?
Out of which, which account, not rainy day, just the.
Insurance is, here's the figures I got. We've received 3,655,000 and some change from the insurance company and we only have 75, or 71,500 left in that account, is that correct?
In rainy day flood, yes, that's correct.
And we've already spent.
Sorry, in flood renovation.
Right, okay, so we have spent 4,943,463.
Give me a second. You're talking about the flood, uh, fund specifically?
I gave you the amount that was totally appropriated in that fund, I think she's got a number for the amount, you want the amount that's spent out of that fund?
Well, all I'm trying to find out is this 2 million gonna get added to the 5 million or are we?
Yes, the 2 million will be added to the 5 million, but it was money that was already appropriated, it's just not spent yet, correct?
I voted nay on the original appropriation, that's my point, and I just want to point out, if we have some people up here saying, no, it's already included.
I'm glad.
Because I.
It's not included, that is correct.
We appropriated it months ago. Right, but we haven't spent it.
Yes.
So we're adding another 2,330,000.
That is correct.
320, I'm not worried about that. If we get here, we can read 7,12. So we're looking at 7 million.
We didn't put right 7 million.
273,000.
Minus the 3 million that you got from the insurance company.
I'm not even.
You're not at $10 million yet on the project, Earl.
So, so can I, here's my exact question to the auditors today. How much money did we bring in? The insurance, he says 3,650,000, correct? They only have 71,000 of that left, so we've spent 3.6 million out of that account, out of the insurance funds. And we've also spent from rainy day and other funds with tonight's transfer, 7,273. That number.
So, yes and no, so the total spent is 5.9 million, that's a correct number, the total across both funds. The amount available to spend is plus that 2 million, you are correct.
That's my point.
But, no, no, it's not your point, because the, the numbers that you were doing, Earl, added up to $10 million, it's 7 million and change.
This money we appropriated back in.
First time.
June?
First time in June.
June.
Second time in August.
Right, the first time it was added in the emergency reserve.
Wrong, Rhonda, some of this money has been spent, so some of these items on here have been paid for.
So, the original appropriation, yes.
Correct.
That's why it's only 2.7.
It was 1.7 plus 500,000, correct?
580.
580.
Well, that was the original, this one is not replacing that, no, those are not in this. The 2.2 million, those amounts were already done that you're talking about, you guys redid that last month.
We did the 1.7, but we never did the 580,000.
Correct, because Councilman Rosenbaum said he thought that that was already included in the 1.7. So this is the leftovers from everything that you did that said galvanized water line, replacement of hot water heating, makeup air unit replacement, insulation for galvanized water lines, alarm system components, HVAC. So whatever that all equal to, 2.3 million is not spent yet. And that is what you're re-appropriating so that it can be spent for anything to do with the complex flood instead of specifically for galvanized water line, replacement of hot water heating, etc. So this isn't, not a new appropriation, but it has money that's not spent.
Right. Okay, when it gets spent, what will be the total spent exclusive of the insurance?
Excuse me, was that exclusive or inclusive?
Exclusive.
Exclusive, so you have to take that 3.6 out.
I don't remember what he said.
Is it the 4.9 million that he was totally appropriated from, from, from the rainy day funds?
Can you just send it?
7.2.
No. 4.9 plus 3.6.
Right, but he asked exclusive, he's asking.
4.9 is the total amount appropriated, that will have been appropriated. Assuming the bills come in, that it's all, that's all spent, that'd be 4.9 million. Plus the 3.6 million already spent essentially.
From the insurance.
From the insurance.
Right.
So, but we will have only appropriated 4.6 million.
Have we already appropriated 4.9 million?
This is a wash, this appropriation is a wash.
We can't use.
Included, okay.
Yeah, we can't use it and add more the way it is.
Money to it.
It keeps it at 4.9 million, it's a minus and a plus.
It just allows them to spend it on items that are covered by the insurance that weren't covered by the original motion, which restricted it.
Yes, absolutely.
That, pretty fair?
So is it fair to say the intent is, is to add flexibility to keep the project going so that we can get? So is it fair to say the intent is, is to add flexibility to keep the project going so that we can get refunded by the insurance company for some of this two point three?
Yes.
And did we have a motion in second already?
We have a motion in second, Randy, you made the motion to do both, and Mike Mullenhauer had done a second, and then we had discussion, and.
Then, I just wanna point out that, um, Andy did provide us with a larger version of the small one that I handed out to everybody, but it kinda gives you a, a thing here, and per the meeting this morning, I think we're on track for the fifth floor to be completed by the end of February?
Yes, that's correct.
And then we're hopeful, without any delays, each, a floor every month after that.
Every month after that.
Right, and then we're also hoping that right after the first, the, or towards the end of January, first of February, the sheriff's office will be completed.
Will be complete, main floor. We'll have a little bit of work left, Andy Skiop from Loport County Project Management, good evening, everyone. So yeah, the main floor will be completed then, and then we'll just have the single room down in the cold case.
Right, which is, which is already getting cleared and getting started.
That's correct.
Just so that we're aware for, for future budget planning, how much in additional expenditures do you anticipate that the county's gonna need to put forward from rainy day in order to be able to complete this project?
Um, I don't know for sure if Chubb will come through, that'd be a question for Mr. DiMartino with additional funds. I can tell you so far, the invoices from all the vendors combined have been running approximately a million dollars a month and we anticipate being done estimated around the end of April, so that would be another five million. Currently, we're billed through the end of November, so that would be December, January, February, March, and April, obviously. And the only, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, just talking through it, and then the only thing I can't state is there is some equipment. So like one month, it was a little over one, run one point two, so we do have some equipment outstanding still HVAC, so the months that that hits the invoice, that could be a little bit higher.
Thank you.
Also, may I add that the last two months, as you complete a floor, there's that much less work.
That is correct, the, the crew will be going down.
Okay, thank you.
One other quick question, so attached to this timeline, I see a, a quote proposal from Premestar totaling a hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
I think we'll talk about that separate.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any nays? Nay.
Abstention.
Okay, so we have four, one, and one.
Same as the nay. It's the same as the nay, so. So, uh, the motion fails?
No, carried.
No, it doesn't, four to two, rainy day fund.
Rainy day.
Super majority. You don't have a full?
Two thirds.
Five, two, has to be five.
With it.
You need five council members, you need five people of the full board.
Of the full board not present?
Correct. Super majority. Four, three, never carries, it has to be five, two, you don't have five votes. It looks like you're gonna have, it looks like you're gonna have to go back to the drawing board about where the project continues.
I would ask the two council members that voted against to reconsider, but.
We can take it up again later.
Well, we're taking it up right now.
Okay.
So.
Any room for reconsideration? If there's no room for reconsider.
I wanna get the project done.
This is rainy day fund, this is not the ARP.
I understand that, and.
But we've already appropriated this.
And what is our rainy day fund balance today?
Five point five million available to the report that we got as part of our agenda packet.
And.
Does that include the two point three million taken out? Yeah, it's already been appropriated.
Cause you guys are saying that's the balance.
That is, that is after the two point three million.
Because the two point three has already been appropriated.
So now let's just play basics here, we got five million, and he just said they're billing a million a month, then we could be another five months. Now, it won't be a million a month because the floors are shrinking, but it's basically gonna wipe out our rainy day fund.
You're right, you're right, Mr. Cunningham, and that was discussed a couple of weeks ago.
And that, so we all understand.
Well, that's what we have to take into consideration before we do the next appropriation.
So, I, I just wanna point out, and this isn't a scare tactic or anything, but if the project stops, the cost is going up.
Exactly, I agree, that's right.
So it's, this isn't a lit stop and everything's gonna stop and the cost of everything is gonna keep going up, so.
We already have had an increase in the cost because we had a stoppage.
Well, we stopped, yeah.
Under those circumstances, I would reconsider.
Should we call for another vote? If you.
Call for a roll count?
Roll count, yes, we have a roll call, please, that way we'll be sure.
Can we redo it?
Let's do this, let's, let's, let's do another motion. A motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider, and why don't you take it, instead of taking it as one motion, do the reversal and then do the reappropriation? Do it in two.
Motion to reconsider the reversal.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in fa, uh, roll call, please.
Well, this is just under reconsideration.
Okay, so then.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any nays? Okay, that carried, okay, now we need a motion.
Motion to approve the reversal.
Second.
You, you're talking about putting the money back in?
About the reversal.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Before you get to the next vote, uh, you know, I, I, if somebody has something that they need to say regarding this, I think that it really needs to be said. I see people with faces and it, the project has been going on for a year, I just don't know what else to say to y'all. If you all, it, it, either it's gonna move forward or it's not, I.
Motion to reappropriate the two million, three hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-nine cents.
I thought we just did that.
No, we did the reversal, now I'm re-appropriating it. So, out of the rainy day fund, for, for items reconnected with the flood complex water.
Water loss.
Loss. Loss, thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a, and a second, any discussion? I'd like to add a comment after.
I would add under discussion that we're, we're fixing like the galvanized lines, we understand that that's not gonna be covered by the insurance.
Well, we don't know that, I like to discuss that stuff.
That's litigate, yeah, we can't.
Okay. Does anybody here on the council think that we're gonna get anywhere near a hundred percent?
Absolutely not.
Thank you, that's all, okay, that's my point, all right.
Correct, because we already know that parts of the HVAC unit, parts are good, parts are not.
Right.
You, you know what I mean, absolutely not, you're not getting a hundred percent of your money, you never get a hundred percent.
Exactly.
We're just trying to get back in the building in a reasonable manner.
I agree, we need to get back in the building, it's been a year.
The reason for my abstention earlier is that I, as I previously noted during other meetings, and I didn't plan to bring it up or rehash this tonight, is of course I have objections to issues around bidding, that was my reason for not voting yes. My reason for not voting no was because I didn't feel that it was prudent to hold up the project and cause problems either. And I had forgotten that they required a super majority when I was doing the math in my head about how many votes we had, so that's why I'm an abstention, I'm somewhere in the middle.
I just wanna go on the record that we did stop the project and we bid these items that are listed, a lot of these items are listed here. The bids came in two million dollars more than what we currently have, so we did stop the project, it cost us, and then when the people that we have up there working rebid it, it cost us even more. So aside from the two million dollars that was the next closest bid, it cost us more money by stopping it and doing it. This is an insurance job, this is an insurance job, there was damage up there, it's an insurance job, it's money in, money out, and there's other items that we have to fix. And that is why I support doing it the way we're doing it.
In light of that, Mr. Novak, can you give me an estimate of the other items we have to fix that probably aren't gonna get covered by insurance?
I believe we've talked about that in our exec sessions. We've talked about that. So there, there, obviously, there's gonna be other items that aren't.
You have a forty-year-old build. When you, when you peel off layers of the onion, you find things that are under that are sort of rotten, you know, and, and those are points of contention with the, with the insurance carrier, but you can't go ahead and, you know, fix the outer layers of the onion without fixing the inner layer, that's just the nature, you know. When you look at the building, some parts of the building just didn't have proper maintenance over the years, just because, you know, we're always shoestring things, we're always doing things, but this is the nature of life, I just, if I had a crystal ball, Mr. Keel, and I was involved on Janu, you know, on, in, in January, I would have done, we would have done things different, but this thing just spiraled out of control, it was, but it was, it's not like a little hailstorm on a roof. I mean, you saw that water flooding in the building, so, uh, we're, we're here, it's December, we gotta plow forward or not.
Yeah, I'm not looking to rehash it, I know that the bids came back higher than the original estimates, there's a difference between an estimate that's not under contract and a bid which is. There's a different level of how much detail goes into it, in fact, what they thought they might have been doing for scope might have changed in the process too. But not looking to rehash it, I think that it's important that we solve this problem in the future and make sure that we don't do future projects without going through a proper bidding process. I'd really love to see us put in place a public purchasing policy.
I support, I support bidding one hundred percent regardless of what you might think. My thing is, is this is an insurance job, stopping it costs us hundreds of, probably thousands of dollars more just by stopping it in the middle of this to, to bid it out, because it's in the middle of a project, you got a half torn apart building and it's like, okay, let's stop it and let's bid it.
And that's why we bid it for the year one.
I'm just telling you.
If I, if I, if, looking at a crystal ball, once we got the place mitigated, it should have stopped and it should have been bided.
We should have had that from the beginning.
We've lived, we live and we learn, but it's, but people were trying to do and get things done, I mean, we, but we can't change that.
But you know, here's what I will go on the record as saying, that should have been done by the commissioners day one, this isn't a council job. That's a commissioner's job when hiring contractors to get bids, the council does not get bids.
I know.
It's the commissioners that get bids.
It was March of last year when you said DiMartino, at least take a look at what they're doing.
Well, we got you in the council.
I, I agree, right.
Okay, uh, without any further comment, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any nays?
Abstention.
And what abstention?
I saved you, didn't I? There's actually a half a vote. It's like a half a vote from each of us.
Okay, moving on, Loport County voter registration and requesting an additional appropriation from general fund, which I don't recommend, riverboat, or wind tax, or ARP for part-time pay, this is five thousand, three hundred dollars.
So, Mr. President, uh, since both co-directors are meeting in a conference right now, um, and managed to work through this with both of them and, um, the deputy auditor, the original request for additional appropriation has been reduced down to seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. How we managed to do that was to, I totally quantify the need being forty-eight, seventy, and fifty cents. There was a transfer from voter reg, uh, from elected officials' pay to, uh, the part-time pay of twenty-eight, sixty-four, and zero cents. And then there'll be a, what we'll require is a council transfer of, of twelve hundred and seventy-four dollars from office supplies, two zero zero one, to, or excuse me, two zero zero, zero one, to part-time pay of one zero one three zero, so.
We need to add the transfer.
We had to add the transfer.
Could you repeat the accounts, the numbers from and to?
So, council transferred from two zero zero, zero one, to one zero one three zero. And that was from office?
And the amount was?
One thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Okay, we'll take that separately, one thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars, uh, but, uh, on the first one, it's only seven hundred and thirty-three dollars?
At, at, at the end of the day, it'll become, yes, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Additional appropriation is now only seven thirty-three, would someone like to make a motion in that amount and select the fund to pay?
Motion to revise the additional appropriation from fifty-three hundred dollars to seven hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Second.
Out of.
Second.
From.
River.
Let's go riverboat.
We have a motion and second, is there any discussion?
Um, I'd like to ask voter registration, are they anticipating that we're gonna have to do this again for 2024? It looks like a nod, yes, from the auditor's office.
Or they reduce hours of part-time help.
Or that.
Keep in mind, the twenty-four election will be bigger than the twenty-three.
Yeah, but there's some, I think, is there somebody on Zoom that wants to talk from the?
Thank you.
So, obviously, this was an issue that wasn't realized during budget hearings, that there was gonna be a shortfall, so.
Oh, address it in 2024. Yep, okay, so we have a motion, uh, any, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any nays? Motion carries. We now have a transfer, and I'm just gonna repeat the account numbers, uh, from two zero zero, zero one to one zero, is, one zero, one three zero, and the amount of one thousand. Excuse me? One thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Motion approved.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. President, are you gonna go on to, uh, the seventeen eighty-two notice now?
Yes, sir.
Before you do that, I'd like to bring up what Mr. Karanka wanted to bring up before. Mr. Skiop, can you, this was a matter that, uh, we discussed previously, it has to do with those, um, pipe connections in the building. Mr. Karanka, you're the engineer here, if you can help us with this.
So, taking what we reviewed previously in an executive session, took the invitation to walk through the, the courthouse and the annex to see, was a lot more of a spread out situation than I, than I understood from when we previously spoke. You see a number of different isolated systems of what's referred to here as small bore copper piping that is left from previous systems that were intended to be tied to. I initially looked at the situation, we'll call it blindly, it was potentially going there with some other type of, uh, inspection method to determine are the joints sound or are they, uh, barely, um, barely engaged from one piece of pipe to a fitting to have a sound joint. Having seen how far this is spread out, where it's located, I, we'll probably have more than half of this cost into an inspection method of having some contractor come in here and identify which individual joints need to be replaced and which joints need to be, um, reworked in order to finish the installation of the other jobs. It seems to be appropriate to consider this proposal for Premestar for, uh, replacement of those various sections of half inch and three quarter inch pipe.
And correct me if I'm wrong, that price is with them, there's a long stretch of pipe, they're gonna reuse that long stretch of pipe and redo the joints and everything else and only replace, cause it, there's a thirty thousand dollar charge if they put all new piping in.
Uh, so.
So there's some sections that they can reuse.
The work would be not to exceed based on the approved rates and they'd only charge for, uh, what they actually do, so, yeah. We don't think we'll need that thirty thousand, that thirty thousand was a placeholder by Premestar for uninsulating and re-insulating, but we already have engaged MNO insulation who was approved by Chubb, so they'll actually take on that insulation, so that thirty thousand dollars there, that, that's not an, up for discussion, it's just the, the amount for the piping.
So let me, let me ask you this, let me ask a couple of questions, Andy, if it's possible. So. And I, and I don't know, in the market, is there ability to go out and, and price the actual, uh, piping from different contractors? The supply, suppliers, or is that standard, you know, as to the price?
You, you could get a material price, but I'm gonna say in this instance.
You've talked to them, you don't talk to me.
You, you could, sorry, you, you could absolutely get a price, but I'm gonna say in this instance, the material pricing differences, there's not. pricing differences, there's not much material cost there. I mean, there's some, but I don't think that savings would be relevant. The main cost is labor, because as Mr. Karanka said, the job is scattered out. I mean, when you, when you think of the job and you go walk three floors in the complex and you see all the offices and all the rooms and everything new has to come up the elevator, everything old has to come down the elevator, so there is a point in time realistically where you spend money trying to chase material, but the labor to do that actually costs more than the savings. So I don't know the procedure, I don't know what board would vote, I'm just being honest. One of the main issues now for us on that, you hire me to move the project along and get the job done, so my job is to do my diligence, is at this point in time, especially on the fifth floor, we were already going to start ceilings this week. So Thursday and Friday, we were going to already start ceilings, so that's what the construction schedule estimated timeline of completion on, which has already been submitted to the carrier electronically. So now we're going to bring more scope into a schedule that's already set and we're going to uninsulate lines that have been re-insulated, we're going to take that piping out, start putting new piping and re-insulate, which if we're going to do it, we need to, I ask respectfully to, to give at least on the fifth floor, if you want to discuss other areas, some authority to proceed, because now we have a schedule that we've pretty much committed to, to the best of our ability. And when we have ceilings lined up and now we're going to bring more piping and we need to get moving.
Do you consider this like a change order on the board that was previously bid from Premestar?
Yeah, so originally, when we, when we walked the job, the, the two inch pipe and bigger was, was black iron, so it was cast iron pipe. So you could visually see that the piping was faulty and we knew the valves weren't working, so the two inch pipe was always on the radar to replace from day one. The, the smaller pipe that I viewed with Mr. Karanka, half, three quarter, the laterals, we'll call it, that was copper. So that was assumed to be in good condition because the material it was composed of, so that's why it wasn't presented to the elected officials, either commission or council sooner in the project, because there were so many moving pieces. When you looked at the copper pipe, it was assumed to be good. Well, it wasn't until the new units came, the old units had to stay running for heat in the building, you know what I mean? So it wasn't until the new VAVs and fan coils came and we disconnected those units to go put in the new units, then when we started altering that existing piping, then we realized that the actual pipe isn't bad, but the joints are bad, the valves are bad, the fittings are bad, and as Mr. Karanka seen, the piping is relatively short. There's not like 100 foot run of half inch pipe where you could say, okay, I don't have to change that 100 foot of pipe, or if we were, where we could quote the material and have a savings. You're talking about multiple five to six foot pieces of pipe and you're changing a bunch of fittings and a bunch of valves for local connections, so.
I'm comfortable with a, with a change order to something that was bid out previously. I presume Mr. Karanka is seeking a motion of support for this?
To be honest with you, I've kind of caught flat footed about bringing it up. I mentioned it just because it was attached to the dot.
Well, it needs to be at least the fifth, at least for the fifth floor.
Right.
You, you should consider that, so at least the fifth floor can get worked on.
For what it's going to cost us to go in and take the ceilings down and redo all this, and this is one of those things that, unforeseen things beforehand, so.
I, I would like to note, this is the last piece of infrastructure in any trade that would be left existing, so all other infrastructure has or will be replaced except this piping.
And correct me if I'm, you seen it, I know it was leaking when you saw it. So we're going to, if we don't do anything, we're going to put the ceilings back up there and there's going to be a water spot on there when we fire this thing up from where it's going to leak.
Or worst case.
Worst case scenario, another flood, and the insurance carrier is not going to cover it because we know about it.
Yeah.
Existing, pre-existing.
Called a rock and a hard place.
Yes, Mr. President.
Isn't there funds available already without us having to appropriate any additional?
I don't know that we'll have to appropriate at this point in time additional, but this is something that potentially you need to know about.
Okay.
Andy wants to know if he can go forward on the fifth floor.
So at this point in time, we, we.
So would you like a motion?
We did it.
You did a motion of support.
Motion of support.
And a second?
Second.
Are, are we able to attach a dollar figure to this and assign it to a fund for our accounting purposes?
We didn't appropriate it.
So, well, I know, but like, we keep track of motions of support so we don't get surprised.
On the.
Put it in the flooded.
In the flooded, on that same chart that you were telling Mr. Cunningham, the numbers, at the bottom, a motion of support, rainy day.
Was it rainy day or was that?
Rainy day.
It's all rainy day. Well, same thing.
So it was an indoor rainy day, that's the.
Right.
We're hopeful that the work as a whole will be under what the amount was estimated and all our invoices are itemized to the auditor's office, so would, that piping is categorized by that vendor so we can always.
Right.
Okay.
Hey, we have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Was there a dollar amount mentioned? I'm sorry for me.
160.
So just so I'm clear, I apologize, this was motion for five or five, four, and three?
160,000, the full.
Whatever this 160,000 represents.
Thank you, counsel.
Which is all three. Okay, before we move on to the 1782 discussion, we're going to take a quick recess, five-minute recess. Okay, we're calling the council meeting, back to order after a short recess. Thank you, everybody, for your patience on that. It did allow us each to get a, a break that we needed. We're going to start talking about 1782 notice, and let me explain.
For that.
Oh. We're going to stop for a second here and we're going to go back. We found the real information about an item that we tabled, so.
We need a motion to take it off.
We need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to take the request from the commissioners for $30,000 for a vehicle off the table.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any nays? Motion carries. So now we can discuss it.
So earlier, as she, our sheriff's vehicle was wrecked, and as you know, we have a self-insured retention, and that money that was spent was for the self-insured retention for the, for the vehicle. And apparently, it was paid out of Rainy Day Fund inadvertently, so this is just trying to, to fix the accounting on the matter.
And, and I'm assuming the $30,000 was the difference between the insurance settlement and what we had to pay for a new car, to replace the car.
Or it was, or it was just the total out of pocket, yes.
And I presume that our self-insurance pot of money for vehicles was fully expended? Was that the situation?
That's, yeah, I don't know that there is a self-insurance money for vehicles. It's like, for instance, a lot of times when we settle injury claims or something like that, we have to go and get funded for it.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Would anybody like to make a motion to pay for it and out of what fund?
So it's basically just a transfer again then, right?
I used the word transfer.
But it's been paid for out of another fund.
Correct.
Not additional spending, it's.
Correct. The term called for that gaping correction.
Claims adjustment?
Yes.
Claims adjustment.
There you go.
I'll make a motion to approve out of, Riverboat has 268,000, and it will go on a Riverboat.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, for going back to that and taking a look at it. Okay, now we're going to get to the 1782 notice. So what happened is we submit our budget to the state and the state reviews our budget and we were under a deadline to get the budget to them and we put in a tax rate that was higher than what was allowed, and they came back and said, no, you can't do that. And then they came back with certain recommendations and certain adjustments, that they go through a procedure, they have a standard procedure of what they go through and they look at all sorts of different funds. And some of the things that they did was they, they, and a couple of our funds, they decided to reduce the assessment that would go into them, that would help cut that overage. One of those funds was the Major Bridge, or it's the MBH Fund, as it's also referred to.
Those are different.
I'm sorry. Major Bridge, sorry.
Yeah.
Major Bridge Fund. And I don't have my notes, I don't have my notes, can I just, just turn this? The Major Bridge Fund was reduced by $397,000 and change accordingly. So with that, with that, they just said, you're going to have to live with the new amount that you're going to be assessed with, and it's going to be 397,283. Just so we, you know, we always have projects that are coming out of there and so that we, and, and we always get, in order to do those projects, we always get grant money and those things go out year in, year out, you know, they, they go extend for several years. We believe, and if anybody doesn't believe, that we can go with a $400,000 less, approximately $400,000 less, rather than trying to find it elsewhere, we would agree with that, with that change. Does anybody else would like to add any comment on that?
My impression is that a good portion of that amount that was budgeted previously was for capital expenditures. We can probably just figure out how we're going to fund those capital expenditures later.
In most part, Major Bridge is affecting.
Two bridges, I believe.
We're in, we're in year three of a five-year plan.
Which it's worth noting, we were having to fund most of that from somewhere besides Major Bridge, so this isn't done.
Currently does not generate enough revenue to cover it anyway, but.
Okay, we're ready to move on to the next line item. I, I should have, the next one is the levy for the Health Fund. What the state decided that they were going to do is they decided that we were going to just use the Health Fund to subsidize everything else and, and, and that was one of the things. The other thing was, is that we also put in there, and this has not been resolved yet, and I, I spoke to DLGF again this, today, this morning, this afternoon, and one of the issues is, we are getting Health First Funds over, over a million dollars, and I thought also part of this was part of our budgeting process, which we did, and they rejected that idea, and so therefore those expenses are also equally coming out at the moment, and we'll have to do additional appropriations next year, which we were trying to avoid, is my understanding as well. But they had done it by 1.6 million dollars and change. We don't think that that's sustainable. We also think that there's a problem on getting the Health First Funds, that if we allow them to do that, that full amount, we will not be funding it by a levy. And even though we're still funding it, gets a little crazy and technical, there's a new law on this Health First, hasn't been fully ironed out, even the DLGF said that they were in the throes of, of trying to get some final answers on it as well, and so that's why we couldn't get it resolved today. We feel that there, there is a need in discussion with some people here individually, that we need to at least put back another 500,000 to move, move 500,000 over.
May I?
Yeah, please, if you would take a moment.
So part of the budgeting process is we set a levy. Contrary to popular belief, we do not set a tax rate, we first set a levy and then that levy determines what the tax rate is. As part of our own budgeting practice, we and every other unit in the state is pretty much overestimating the amount of levy that they're going to bring in through property taxes. The reason they do this is to make sure that they can get the maximum amount possible. So this is not an unusual practice. The DLGF, through their 1782 notice, which is what we're discussing tonight, will cut it to make sure that you're not collecting more property taxes than you're statutorily allowed. There's all sorts of restrictions on how much you can grow the collection of property taxes each year, which is, which benefits the public. In this case, we overestimated the amount of levy that we would bring in by about 1.6 million. Now, in a normal budget procedure, they would apportion that reduction of levy in a bunch of different places. Some might go to general and it gets cut down, the amount of revenue that they would bring in, some might go to 2015 reassessment or the Health Fund, et cetera, and they would spread it across the board. In our situation, we are rather strapped in general, we're projected to go down to a zero dollar cash balance at the end of 2024, meaning that there's not savings to tap into and we're much more down to the wire. So they couldn't make reductions to the levy in the general fund without it having a bigger impact. Similar situation in 2015 reassessment and Major Bridge and many of the other funds, there's really not a lot of wiggle room for them to apply those levy reductions to those funds. So they shifted their gaze to the Health Department, which had a cash savings or is estimated to have a cash savings at the end of 2023 this year, 1.7 million, which would be enough for them to potentially use their savings to cover their operational expenses for the year. So in the case of the Health Fund, the DLGF is not proposing a reduction to spending, they're proposing a reduction to revenue. We can offset this by shifting levy from other places as part of this process tonight to essentially take revenue that was going to flow into the general fund bucket and instead flow that revenue into the Health Fund. The Health Fund is anticipated to bring in about 800,000 or so dollars in miscellaneous revenue anyways. If we were to shift half a million dollars of property tax levy from the general fund over to the Health Fund, less any circuit breaker impacts, which is another whole lengthy thing to explain, less that amount, they would basically burn through about 10% of their current cash reserves, roughly 170,000. And again, their spending authority is the same, they're just dipping into their savings less. I think that the contention here is that if we were to allow the state board of, or the DLGF's recommended changes, it would cause them to burn through the majority or a good chunk of their savings, which isn't really fair to the Health Department. I don't think that really demonstrates our commitment to public health, I don't think the Health Department's thrilled about that at all. This would be a much more reasonable reduction in their savings, given the totality of all these other circumstances and the budget situation that we're in, I, I think that's a reasonable request. Now, as Councilwoman Rosenbauer alluded to, there's also this question of how we maintain eligibility for Health First Indiana funding. Some of you may recall, through Senate Bill 4, there was money that the General Assembly is going to direct to health departments as part of their initiatives to expand public health in communities. That funding requires that we maintain distributions of funding in the same amount as the average of the last three years. There is a legal question about whether or not that means, do we need to provide the average of the last three years levy, which is revenues, or do we need to provide the average of the last three years in spending authority, which is budgets or appropriations? That part is still being figured out and depending on what we learn from that, it could wildly change what we do here.
Mr. Keel?
Mm-hmm.
So Amanda received a email from the Department of Health Attorney, and this is what the Department of Health Attorney said. In accordance with the statute, counties that opt into the enhanced public health funding each year to ensure continued county support for the local health department, funds distributed to the local health department for the county match can only include county-based tax revenue, which could include tax levy, or miscellaneous revenue. This match cannot include state-based funds, local health department revenue, federal funds, or private funds. So you can't use health department revenue in order to make your part of your money. Although the statutes aren't clear as to the use of carryover funds, things just need to be sorted out, and typically with new statutes, it takes a while for the state to sort things out, so.
The thing is, we just don't want to jeopardize that $1.3 million.
I wouldn't recommend it at this time until we get some clear guidance.
So we're looking at the bill to.
And just, and just so you know, you got to realize, so this is the legislative branch that wrote the statute. The Department of Health, DLGF, SBOA, they're all the executive branch. You know, who knows really what was on the, you know, legislative branch's mind? A lot of times, they don't give thoughts to every permutation or how, what people are going to do, so I'm sure this is going to get refined. I just don't recommend, I recommend that you don't get too radical this year with it.
Right, because this, the statute does read, in the first year, the local board of health receives funds under this section from the county. So it, it sounds like in their, in the statute, they don't care about two, three, years, two, three.
Well, we'll see what happens.
I know, there'll be more to come, but it specifies in the first year.
So your impression is that, based off of this, and please send me a copy later so I can read it some more, but.
Yeah, I'll forward.
And this is new information, so we're doing this on the fly here. Your recommendation is that we leave the levy the, equal to the last, the average of the last three years?
Yeah, or are there, is there other miscellaneous revenue that you could substitute the levy? I, I don't think so, we don't have it, so.
No, I mean, it is miscellaneous revenue that goes into there, but it's, I don't know how that compares to prior years, not without researching it.
I recommend that we, we stay put.
On the Health Department.
1.6 then?
1.6, 35, 46.
You were talking about moving out 500, right?
Yeah, but.
Yeah, so staying put results in the DLGF cutting the levy. Yeah, so staying put results in the DLGF cutting the levy in the health fund. So I think what you're actually saying is that you want us to shift 1.6 million so that we make health department completely whole to what we originally averaged as part of the budget. Are we sure that through the budgeting process, that that was equal to the average of the last three years?
Mm-hmm, to shore up some of this.
We would need to go back and look at the levies from the last three years to be sure.
Will the other revenue, or can we use the savings considered as funding?
I don't know that.
I know, this is what we're tossing around, so, and as I said, this is one of the questions I have answered, and you.
You know, we should not want counties to say, oh, you're getting 1.6, we're going to pull 1.6. You know what I mean? Because they know.
They know us too well.
Well, they know that we have needs, and that's the easiest.
Well, our, our other biggest problem is this, a state, one of the state mandate, or state opportunities, and then then pulling back in three years.
Well, the purpose was to improve the health department, not state subsidize our...
Well, actually improve the lives of people in the county, because these, you know, because they want programs for higher, higher-risk counties that people are dying, for heart disease, diabetes, all those things. And so in the long run, it's supposed to help everybody, because hopefully, we won't, you know, Medicaid won't be getting as taxed. I mean, that's the goal, whether it works.
They want to make sure it's passed on to the citizens and not, which we're not going to do, squandered in a budget.
Are you waiting for an answer?
No, I'm contemplating, you know, what our...
There's a hand up.
Oh, Amanda, go ahead, Amanda.
I found out, you know, going into the conversation, that 1.6 million doesn't have to be retained by we brought after 2024. 2024, our Health First Indiana funds, depending on the number of counties that are opted in, is going to double from that 1.3 to 2.5, up to 3 million. So the county as well, I don't want to have the number exactly in front of me, but the county's responsibility in 2024, it'll be around $750,000. So that 1.6 isn't going to be every year going forward, I don't think helps.
Thank you, it does, it does for me.
Yeah.
It does, but we still have to solve how. Thank you.
We're going to get there.
Okay. In light of that, I would say we probably need to move 1.6 million of levy from the general fund over to health to address that, at the moment, at least until perhaps we can get a little bit more guidance from them.
Well, that was one of the other problems, one of the other issues. So let's move on to some of the other things that the state has, is there anything else that we want to bring out, what the state has done, or?
You moved to general.
Okay, we move on to the general fund issues. The general fund is, as we, as was stated, that it was going to be towards zero, so the only way to find money out of the general fund is to either have additional income, and there's a couple ways we can get additional income, and there's also to cut expenses. We know a little bit on each side of that, what we think that we could do. There is, we're hoping that we wouldn't have to touch this, but one of the things we need to look at is at our interest income. We're hoping that if we've only budgeted $250,000, and we get more than that, it helps cover, you know, helps us rebuild the general fund, and when we're earning probably, and are we over a million dollars already this year, and we still have some other adjustments to be put in from the treasury.
I don't know the exact number, I do, I do believe the number, the, the real issue is, is getting it above, the bulk of the money, I think is still in the low 3% range, and that's really...
I believe Mr. Keel stated there's 15 million in a CD at 5%, 5 plus 5%.
2%, I believe.
So.
The average annual balance is, is still considerably higher than that.
But that alone is going to generate 700, approximately 50,000 compared to the 250 that we estimated.
Correct.
So, and that's just the one, and I know we have other chunks of money sitting there.
I think that's the only thing that's invested at this moment, but I'm not entirely sure without speaking with the county treasurer.
Well, you say invested, but of course.
Yeah, we also, we also want to, don't want to take into the maximum amount, you know, think that we can rely on those interest earnings, because we don't know if interest will stay that high in all of next year, so.
The 250 is considerably low, but.
So the, the idea is that we find, if we increase that, we take away some of the burden that we have to find of 1.6 million. Okay, so that's one of the thoughts. Everybody, good understanding.
Increase it to 500,000. That's, that's still a pretty, I'd say.
We're not looking to make it a million.
You can go higher than that, really, you're, I think you can go higher than that.
Well, I, I feel comfortable with the 750 that we currently have invested right now at the 5%, if it's generating 750,000 a year.
How long has the CD is locked up, Mr. Keel?
One year, I believe the maturity is sometime early next year.
Which covers us early 2025?
Correct, 24.
Okay.
It was invested at some point this year, summer, maybe.
So I guess what we haven't calculated is, is, and that maybe there's something from the treasurer, is what our average daily balance is in the, and, you know, in the, in the regular checking account, what we're getting, and make sure that we're, that you've got it budgeted at the three and a quarter, where we're getting, see if that can be switched to something even higher, because you thought with health, with, not Health Indiana, but with the trust Indiana.
Indiana trust.
Trust Indiana, yeah.
Or between 4% and 5%, and maybe we can nail down a more accurate number on that, but.
What we can do is work with that CD right now, at least we know that, and then have the other, because that may fluctuate also with money market rates next year, so unless somebody wants to take a bigger gamble other than the 750.
Well, before we, we get into the topic of solutions, I think we kind of need to scope out the problem here. So just as a recap, the, the DLGF, Department of Local Government Finance ordered $802,000 worth of cuts to, rounding here, to the general fund budget. We also just transferred, or are proposing to transfer 1.6 million of levy from the general fund over to the health fund, so that, that takes us further down. And then based upon the Form 22s, we estimate that there was about 266 or 267,000 less revenue collected in property taxes for the second half of the year than what we had projected as part of our budget. So this takes us to a negative of 2.67 million dollars worth of cuts that would need to be made in order to balance it out.
So as part of that, I took the, my notes from the budget, and if you all recall from budget hearings, I was pretty close with the balance. I'd say I'm about 99% accurate in terms of what our budget is versus what was submitted to the state. I selected 28 different accounts that are all funded out of the general fund, and treating these is exempt, meaning accounts like utilities, you know, electric water power, water sewer, things like psychological services for the circuit court, food and dental and medical hospital for the jail, those sorts of things, things that we can't really change, whether it be because of a contracted rate, or for what the purpose of the money is. Taking, treating those exempt, and then looking at the remaining accounts that are funded from, from the general. 8.15% reduction across all of those accounts, minus the 28 that are treated exempt, would cover at least, would cover the 802,000.
May I?
Please. So just, just to clarify, the, we need to cover the 800 and some thousand dollars that the DLGF's saying we're short?
Correct, plus the 1.6 plus the 267.
Let's do, but if we, if we neutralize that with what Mr. Krunkas stated, are these other things we're predicting for next year, or they need to be fixed right now?
The 1.6 million that we're transferring in levy does have to be fixed now.
There's no levy going into the health department now? So you're putting, so there's no?
No, no, that's with the full 1.6 going back there. So instead of the cuts to the levy being done in the health fund, those cuts would be happening in the general fund. Levy reductions or a reduction in revenue?
They, they reduced 2.4, 2.4 million, they took 1.6 out of health and 800 out of general.
Actually, they're two different things. So a budget cut is a reduction in, in spending authority, a levy cut is a reduction in revenue. They're, they're kind of two different problems.
But the resolution is we either find, we find more income, or, and we cut expenses.
Yeah.
To match whatever that number is.
How many years come up here?
802?
802, that's the actual reduction, it came out of the...
And you said 8.15%?
It's going to be hard to hit 2.67, I'm just telling you that right now.
In addition to that, again, we're piecemealing this, right? There's 674,853 in part-time funds across various departments. Those flow differently, right? We were just talking with voters' registration, where their budget's probably short for what they need to do for a 20, for a federal election, but the, but there are other departments that may have.
Yeah, well, they also could take weeks that they don't have part-time in there as well, you know, and extremely slow weeks, so that they don't have to come back to us for money. These are part-time people. It's not like you're furloughing full-time people. So part-time people are at the whim of the needs of, of the office.
So you're, so you're suggesting is to furlough all part-time?
No, I'm, that's not my suggestion. I'm saying, if you're going to find a fix in that, in that one department, I'm suggesting that they just cut their own hours, and they're part-time people. Now, Mr. Krunkas brought up a different thing, using the same thing with the part-time help, now how much of what I just said can be applied to that?
Yeah.
And I'm not saying, I'm not saying you furlough everybody, I'm just saying you, you reduce the number of part-time hours. Now, I don't think that can be done in all departments, is the problem.
No, I don't believe that.
Because I don't believe we can do, there's certain departments that we can, and other departments that we, you know, we don't, we, you know. So what was your intent of bringing up the part-time?
Hey, just more discussion point for us to consider if we're going to do something, some kind of peanut butter deduction, how do we do it?
Okay.
The problem would be, if we cut that tonight, we'd have to refund it first of the year out of a different account.
Because we know we can't.
Towards the end of the year. Well, we know we can't, well, if we strip it, the 600.
Oh, we strip it all, no.
Yeah, no, we're not looking, we're not looking to strip.
It was back by...
We're looking, we're looking to just do it, okay. Also, we do know that one of our insurance policies was just switched for the workman's comp, and I didn't get the exact number today, as I was hoping to get, but it is over $200,000, so even if we use a $200,000 figure, and that is the workman's comp insurance, by switching to a different carrier, which is already taking place. It was originally supposed to be 400,000, and I got really excited about it, and then I ran into somebody, I ran into somebody from the insurance agency, and they told me, no, it's only 200,000. At the last minute, there was a change on that, so. That is also something that's on the table where we could cut an expense. Another thing that I'm going to bring it up, and it's not, you know, popular in any way, shape or form, and this is the health insurance paid by the employees, and I'm not looking for anything astronomically different, and the general average is 20, 27% of what employers, employees pay, pay for their medical insurance, and we're at 15, and I have nowhere, nobody do I ever want to go to, to go that rate, but 1% more is, for a family, is $33 a month. That's a family. So that comes out to about $400 a year, and that's a little bit of a hit, but, you know, it adds up when you do all the employees and everything, the numbers that we received a couple months ago, when we asked this question, and we got the answer back in October, was about $90,000, it would come back. And that was, I believe, using the older rates. So it may, now that we have the new rates in front of us, that's why we're pushing this back, because if we make a decision here of just 1% of, and it's not 1% of somebody's pay, it's 1% of medical costs, which is completely different, and if you're just a, an individual, it's just like $14. So it's, it's, it's not like it's a super big hit, but it is a hit, and that's another, that's another way.
What does that generate?
It generates about $90,000 for each 1%. Doesn't solve the problem.
Doesn't even.
I know.
Put a dent in it.
I know, it's not a popular thing. If there was a time to do, it would have been more last year, or the year before, when they got 5 and 10% raises, but, you know, the reality is, is that, you know, you, you don't, you don't try and hurt anybody, but we have a reality of, of where we stand, and we didn't bring everybody's, you know, we did our best effort a year ago to bring everybody's wages up to market. So that's just, trust me, I'm looking at straws here on every little angle that we can find money from. So that was the, those are the, those are the few things that I have. The rest of it, for any major big cuts, gentlemen, I don't have the, I don't have an answer.
For short-term, for 2024, I don't. I have some recommendations that would be worthwhile, including commissioners on. If you look at other counties, Allen, Marion, and St. Joe, for example, all have, they all have higher revenues than we do, it's understood. But also seven other municipalities included with that, that are outside of those counties, all maintain a purchasing department, which means that you, instead of having department heads working with their selected vendors that may be approved for the county, doesn't give you the same buying leverage that you would for, if you were to have it as the county as a whole, for, for simple things, cleaning materials, office materials, things like that. How much of our reduction could we see year over year if we look at a centralized purchasing department?
I do know some of that was being practiced by buying a year's supply in the past, I can't, you know, prior years, and talking with different departments, where some of these things were tried to be done like that, but the overall concept of having a purchasing agent to get the best price, especially in an entity, an organization our size, is, is something that needs to look into, but that means that it does take an employee to do that.
Yes, correct.
It does take a new designated employee, and possibly an assistant or part-time to do that.
So what you're looking at is the savings of what it takes to recover the general fund where we were in past years, minus that salary, or reallocation of an existing salary, or something of that nature.
But it doesn't mean that we can't practice these things the best we can. I mean, we, we've certainly been working with computers, doing, you know, hopefully we're done with computers for a while, because in the past couple of years, I think we've replaced almost every computer, but then we were working with stuff with Windows 7 on it, and if anybody knows, Windows 7 is 10 years old, and we've already got hacked once, and we're not looking to be hacked again, and that stuff, you can't protect it. So we had some very old machines that really needed to replace, and some, and sometimes a lot of, a lot of the different departments use their own funds to pay for it, so I think we've, we've done, you know, that part, but that's a...
Realistically, to think that we're not going to have to replace any computers this next year, they're on a rotation basis.
So they're always, but we're not going to do the math like we've done with the clerk's office, and with juvenile probation, and some other departments. The adult probation has had it under, you know, under control, and some other areas have had it under control.
Can I, just, out of curiosity, the, the increase in the EMS fees this last year? So I, I know our projection is 3 million coming in versus 1.5 for this year?
The 1.5 was for the first, or the last half of the year, and that's full year.
For next year?
Yep.
Right, okay. But, but so, we've got an increase there?
No increase, it's the same amount.
We increased the rate, so we're not anticipating that being transferred over?
Oh, well, there is, yes, they did increase the rate. I don't know that they ever presented us with an estimated increase in revenue for that, so it's not clear how much that is.
And Mr. Rezquire on...
The, plus the amount that the juvenile center is returning back, we've heard figures from over a million dollars to pushing $2 million in a given year.
I've heard those figures myself, and I've seen what they have for the, for the census when it comes to that, it's more like 800,000. But that's, in new revenue or just total?
Total.
But compared to what was a less than half a million dollars before?
Yeah.
So that would be another, another area where we can increase the revenue side and get some relief there, because we know that there's more money coming in.
Well, part of the, there might be an issue here, and what do we anticipate we were going to bring in, in revenue from juvenile services? Because it's, it's really not what we received, it's what we anticipated we would receive that makes the difference here. Ms. Graves, are you able to break down the other, in our miscellaneous revenues in the 1782 or in the Form 4B item? item R four one four, federal, state, and local reimbursement for services? Are you able to break that out any further than that, or do we not know?
Microphone, microphone.
It's possible that I can look it up on Gateway and see what was entered. Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
I'm looking for something else real quick, so give me a minute, but which one is it? I'm sorry, Form 4B?
Our, yeah, the Form 4B under general, R four one four, federal, state, and local reimbursements for services. Here we estimated one point four three million for it.
One other reduction that seems to be uniform across the entire seventeen eighty-two is that our one-one-four vehicle aircraft excise tax distribution, for whatever reason, the annualized amount is less for next year than it was for this year.
Yeah, those are based off of numbers that we get from the Department of Local Government Finance that are plugged into the budget.
Pulled out of the air or some kind of.
No, they have.
It must have a formula.
So, why are they predicting that to be low?
I don't know, I didn't ask them.
People are buying their cars. Less available than might be.
It is vehicle aircraft excise tax, maybe people are buying less planes.
No, I need to go out and buy me a beachwood. Yeah, no, just kidding aside.
Well, while Rhonda is looking up that number, let's, let's work into our solution from what we know to then what we don't know. So, we know we have about two point six seven million dollars in reductions. We know that workman's comp is supposed to be two hundred thousand dollars in savings, which I'll note may not be perpetuated into the future, so this may be something.
We're looking for the one-year.
Yeah, so one-year savings potentially. So, that brings us down to two point four seven.
What you said, the interest income?
Back to that one, because that one's a little bit of a variable still. I spoke with Ms. Graves earlier today, and she estimated that we brought in over three hundred thousand in revenue from the highway department's auction, which flowed into the general fund. Is that correct?
But that's gone.
This would actually increase our anticipated or estimated year-end cash balance.
They.
Did they spend it on something?
No, they, they moved a mountain of, of, of stuff that we're not.
He's saying, he's saying we generated the money.
Oh, we generated the current year.
Yes.
But that would offset.
And this is, this is revenue we did not anticipate to bring in, so it wasn't included as part of our, our estimates in the budget process. So, this is unanticipated revenue that we brought in. So, it lowers, or it increases our ending cash balance for this year, which thus increases the starting cash balance for next year. So, there's three hundred thousand that we've reduced our problem by. Now, we're down to one point, or two point one seven million. Councilman Karanka's talked some about, about doing cuts. You identified nine point eight million dollars of expenditures that could potentially have some degree of cuts done to them. And this was excluding things like health insurance or contracts that we already know, or utilities, which we really can't reduce so easily.
Correct.
I got a spreadsheet here with numbers plugged in. If you guys wanna throw out a percentage, I can tell you how much it'll, it'll work out to be.
Well, he had enough specific items.
Yeah, I have his, his nine point eight million figure.
Okay, oh, I see what you're saying. You, you have a starting figure.
Yep, so if you say two percent, I can tell you that's a savings of a hundred ninety-six thousand. If you say five percent, I can say it's four ninety.
Let's go three.
Let's go three.
This is a three percent cross the board.
Three percent across the board minus the exempt counts.
Correct.
Of, of, yeah, non-specified.
Three hundred.
And you said that was two ninety?
Two ninety-four.
Two ninety-four. So, we're down to one point eight, almost one point. I may have got. We go, what are we down to?
We are now down to one point eight seven.
Eight seven.
One point eight seven.
Correct.
I got one point eight eight six, but.
I have some more precise numbers in here. I was rounding some things as we were explaining, this is.
I think it would be a very safe move to increase the, our investment return to seven hundred and fifty thousand versus the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was plugged in.
That would take us, and it's worth noting, this is on top of the two hundred thousand dollars in, in interest revenue that we said we would bring in as part of our budget.
It was only two hundred or two fifty, because I thought it was two fifty. I, I had two fifty in my mind, so let's, let's.
Give it a check here.
I don't wanna add an extra.
Earnings on investments and deposits, two hundred thousand.
Too even.
So, we're going, we're adding five fifty.
Yeah.
To make it seven fifty.
That would put us at negative one point three two million. So, here's, here's the thing with this, you know, the, the county has probably about seventy million dollars in cash assets. These aren't always in places that we can spend. Some of these are things that are very restricted use. Sometimes it's money that's flowing in for things like child support that's just sitting in our bank before it goes out to other places. But last I checked, we're under the impression that our average daily balance is probably somewhere around seventy million as a safe number. This is in banks, it's not sitting here in the county, to be clear.
But we do this all the time.
Yes, it fluctuates around the year, there's.
Goes up at, at collection and then sinks the next five months.
From my research, I believe that we can also invest money that comes in from property tax collections that sits in our accounts for about a month before it's distributed through settlement.
Isn't that a point of consternation between you and the treasurer that needs to be ironed out before you start budgeting it?
I think I've ironed it out, but she may disagree. But this is something to look into more. The, so those sort of things, we could probably produce more interest revenue than what we're actually.
That could be used as our backup, not so much our, oh, we need this.
Yeah, I mean, if we can convince the treasurer to invest it very competitively in safe things, like Trust Indiana, which is yielding over five point two percent last I checked, we could earn considerable amount more interest. We might be looking at the range of over three million, which would solve our problem entirely. But we can, we cannot direct the treasurer to invest money. We have no say in that. Statute gives her complete authority to do so.
Yeah, and, and we don't know that that rate will be there for the whole year.
We don't.
I'm sure the treasurer's gonna try and get as much money as we possibly can.
Yeah.
This might be an opportunity for the auditor to weigh in. I mean, he, you know, works in the markets, the likelihood that we're going to.
He doesn't work in.
Talking hypothetical.
Well, no, I'm talking about interest rates. What is the likelihood that the Fed is gonna drop them to zero very quickly?
I would be foolish if I, well, very quickly, it's only, only if there's a sudden recession.
It'd be a huge, fast.
I think that you're right that the county should be and can be getting considerably more on its, on its investments in terms of return, and Trust Indiana, as you discovered, as you have argued, is, is, is the way to go.
So, but we, we don't see the interest rates plummeting. Being in real estate for twenty-five years, listening to the experts, they anticipate the interest rates holding throughout 2024, maybe coming down a little bit, softening to six, or high sixes, somewhere in there, but they do not anticipate a bottom out again, so.
So, if we were to take eighty percent of that seventy million, and we were gonna move it to Trust Indiana, which earns five point two percent?
It's not our job.
What's the seventy million? I know it's the pressures.
I know.
I'm saying hypothetically, if she did it, that would produce two point nine million dollars in interest revenue.
What's the seventy million, is that the average annual balance, or is that the?
That's what I'm working off of, I don't have precise numbers. I'd need bank statements to do that.
Or the monthly reconciliations.
Well, we certainly think that you could probably raise that two fifty up to about a million. But some of that is dependent.
I'd be happy to have a conversation with the treasurer to make sure that we're getting, and if that program is the absolute best, I'm a hundred percent for it. But unfortunately, with her family issue that just happened yesterday, I don't think we're in a position to talk to the treasurer.
I'm cognizant of that.
You what? I, I know, but, but I think that, that, that's a great conversation to have, I'm not.
Yeah, it was something I've been.
I think it's, yeah, Mr. Keel is making is, Trust Indiana is almost like a cash account. You can put it in one day and take it out the next. It's not like a CD, you're tying up six, five months, you can take it out the same day. It sounds great. We not do it if we're getting one percent somewhere else.
I agree.
Three percent.
And that's a conversation we need to have with her. What if we, what if we, and this is a, something I just threw out to Adam. What if we, typically, we put five million dollars into the, out of the economic lit, we put it into highways to shore up their account, so we do that. Typically, they don't spend it all. I think when we did budget hearings, the one year they spent three million, but there's usually some left. What if we reduce that to four million dollars and take that million dollars off of there to shore this up for 2024 only?
Our dilemma might be that, my impression is, in order for us to use the economic development lit for, for a broad variety of uses, kinda like that, that we need to have some sort of capital projects plan in place, which we need a capital moment.
Which we really should start working on.
Yeah, it's conversation still.
No, I.
But it's, it's gonna have to be more serious conversation in the beginning.
Well, but Randy's point is a good point, which is, take it from where you can get it as long as you can replace it later, or based upon the needs of the department. Which, so, I mean, that's why I've been arguing for major moves. I mean, that, that money can fund the highway department, from the major moves money, which has been sitting there for almost twenty years. It's time to use that money, that'll free up more money economic development lit, which is a broader array of uses that you can use, especially if you come up with a capital plan. Money is fungible, you know?
Yeah, but major moves is not being funded anymore. It's, you know, once.
I, I know, but the, the notion that the only thing you're looking at is that because something is not funded anymore, it's not money that you can use to.
No, I'm not saying we never use it, as a matter of fact, this year we did use some.
I think, I think the, and this goes before me coming on, I'm looking down at the senior member here today, Mr. Cunningham.
Ouch.
Mr. Yagelski is absent.
That's right. That, the thought with the major moves was to invest it into things. We, we invested in the KIP because we thought there was gonna be a return on KIP at the time. We invested into sewer project out in Roland Prairie, and they're slowly paying, I think, the county dividends on that sewer line.
That money is money.
I'm not saying.
Money is money.
I'm not saying that still stands today in the exact same way. I think that was the concept originally with that, it was for special products and.
And I think we're gonna have to tap into it when we, when their trucks come in next year.
And this problem will become more severe and, for the 2025 budget. So, I mean, there's gonna be more problems to be figured out by them, but today we have this problem in front of us. I guess my response to the, the notion that the money is fungible is true. However, it kind of exists as this operating balance that we can tap into in the event of an emergency. You know, we've already talked about earlier this meeting that our rainy day fund may be pretty much committed to a project for a time being, and that money is tied up. The ability to respond to an emergency is, without, say, major moves, is very limited. I mean, our balances in Riverboat and wind tax are at the lowest in, in over fourteen years, which is as far back as online records went.
Your, major moves doesn't respond to an emergency. Major moves has limited uses that are related, I thought, to roads. I mean, how broad is the usage of major moves? And that if you spend major moves money and free up more economic development lit money, that's a broader function and a broader use than, than major moves money. That's, that's.
It's, I don't know that I've seen a restriction on, but, but.
It was for highway development and that.
Originally, yeah.
Transportation.
Yeah. So, you're saying that the economic development lit, we couldn't shore up that without identifying a project?
And producing a capital projects plan.
Complex, capital.
It's being funded out of somewhere else, but I suppose you could maybe look at, building maintenance has a bunch of money that's essentially for capital projects, certain maintenance or improvements. I suppose you could argue that could maybe be moved into economic development lit if we put it together as a plan and actually said, these are the projects that we're giving them funding to go do, which actually could be a good thing.
Looking at their budget, a lot of their stuff is general maintenance and things like that to where unless we.
But it wasn't with the former, there were plans, and then it turned into general maintenance.
Yep.
So.
So, we'd have to restructure how they come forward with their budget in the future.
Yeah.
But how do we stop it? Line items right now, we don't have, we don't have it there.
It's not gonna work now. We, we already pulled them back two years, so, you know, more than a year.
We could potentially pick a department that we wanted to focus on, reduce it today, and then come back in January and, not reduce it all the way, but reduce it a good chunk of the way. They would have enough money to do what they were planning to do in January. And in our January meeting, we figure out a game plan for them and appropriate the money from somewhere else, like economic development lit, and they're good to go again.
So, what if, I'm gonna be a hypothetical, the health department is sitting on a little over a billion dollars in their savings.
One point seven, yes.
And for Amanda that's listening on there, relax, let me, let me explain the story. So, if, if we took, let's say we take five hundred thousand dollars out of that, and then if they have a capital project, then we could use, then we can use economic development lit and different things like that if we, if they have a capital project.
If you have the capital project.
I know that some of the savings that they're doing is because they need to build a storage building or do something to house the truck and the trailer they got and everything else. So, if we were able to fund some of those and take some of the money out of there now, and I'm not, oh, I'm just, I'm just trying to find, ways to find money, so.
Well, we support the general concept that you're talking about, which is take it from where you can get it now, as long as you replace it later, and give reassurance, and give reassurance. And I'm, I'm gonna speak for you, so I apologize.
No.
And as long as you give reassurance to department heads that your needs will not be ignored, but we need this money now. I mean, you just transfer money to the recorder because she'll have more flexibility to spend on her people, so you won't have to spend from other funds where it's committed to elected officials' training. You know, just do what you need to do, how you wanna do it, but reassure officials that we're not gonna abandon you. Because a lot of officials, what we have learned and seen in our office, is if they've been sitting on this money that's quote-unquote theirs, that, I'm not talking about health specifically, but as broad the other departments, that they do have this proprietary sense that it's there. But the reality is that the council is mommy and daddy, well, daddy, I'm sorry, in, in this case. And it's the council's job to, 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 to take from here and there and reassure department heads that we're not gonna abandon you, but this is the collective money of, of the county, and we've got to, my, my concern is that the council overreacts and frankly, cuts things that, 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 I mean, the biggest thing that it seems like you're doing that is the hardship for everyone that is apparently necessary is to freeze pay. I think, you know, that, that you're gonna catch up with these other things based upon this other money that exists elsewhere. It's just a matter of shuffling the money, in my opinion, shuffling the money and seeing where you stand, you know, at the next budget season.
We've always assured.
It's not particularly sustainable, that could lead to bigger problems in the future if we're just kind of shifting things around and hoping it works later. Like, money's not gonna fall for the sky.
I guess I, I would, I would agree with Tim.
Take a picture. We're just taking a listening now.
Just in this one thing, no, I'm just kidding. But I would, I would agree with Tim, because even in the past, when we, we sat down at budget hearings and we said, we're taking five percent across the board, bring us your things. And we, the last thing we told everybody, if you run short, come back and see us. Because, because it is very hard, and especially right now, if we, after the budget hearings, go in and blindly cut, let's say, two percent, three percent, five percent, it's gonna create, it's gonna create a hardship because things are already set into place. So, you have to give the reassurance that if it's, if it's a legitimate item, I'm not talking, you know, if they had some willy-nilly. And trust me, when I tell you that being here for eight years, there's not a lot of, I would, I would say there's very, very little fat in any budget. Would you agree, Mr. Auditor? I mean, there's not a lot of.
Well, I mean, subject to what some of you have requested, which is an efficiency study, that part I can't answer.
So, so I think at this point, if we did a, a blind cut across the board excluding the items that Adam mentioned, we'd have to give some assurance that we're, hey, come back, you know, if it creates a hardship, you gotta come back and see us. You gotta justify it, don't get me wrong.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree. My concern though is that we are increasingly having limitations about how we can spend money that we've used to kinda plug those holes in the past. So, when we ask departments, like, come back if you need more money. The example might be like the sheriff, who in the past would come back and ask for more money for fuel. The council deliberately underfunded his fuel budget and thinking that, you know, maybe we'll get lucky and gas prices will be cheap this year. Now, he's, for a while, he's gonna come back and ask for more money for fuel. We don't pay for those things out of Riverboat and wind tax, and that, those are the main ones, maybe general fund.
Now, we have public safety lit.
Well, public safety lit is mostly tied up for next year. Riverboat's at pretty low numbers, wind tax is at pretty low, and that basically leaves ARP, which is, you know, one-time funds. And that basically leaves ARP, which is, you know, one-time funds.
So what do you suggest?
That's right.
We're at 1.3.
I suggest caution in saying, we'll just come back if, if we, you know, cut too much. There may not be something left.
Legitimate thing in a department, I'm not saying blindly, everybody come back and we're gonna redo it. I'm saying somebody, they gotta come up here and you've, no one's come up here and gotten a free ticket to anything.
Paired with your conversation where you're talking about come back and for legitimate costs and we'll, we'll support you. There's also necessity is the mother of invention. We are in a need, in a situation of need. Let's find a way to adapt or encourage that and work with our liaison reports and things like that. How can they individually lower their costs to stay under a budget that we've had to lower?
But, but we're blindly asking department heads, we, and I agree with you. Some of them may never come back. Some of them may never, in other words, we could cut 2%, 3%, 4%, 5%. Some of them will never come back. There's others that are, can't do that. In other words, they've got very important things with the count. I mean, because this is a, I mean, it's a blind cut.
Yeah.
I'm not saying don't do it. I'm, I'm, I agree with you. We gotta do it.
It's what philosophy are we gonna have?
But if you think department heads aren't gonna come back and say, hey, you're short of me here, I need this there, you're mistaken. It's gonna happen.
I wanna, and this isn't so much a rebuttal, this is just expanding on, on the landscape of our situation. But we do know that there's gonna be funds that are gonna need to get additional appropriations all ready for 2024, things like the jury pay fund, voter registration needed a little bit more money. Rhonda, keep filling in the blanks here. We think that health insurance.
Lads will do twice, so 90,000 times two, basically.
We, we know that the health insurance, employee health insurance may be underfunded by as much as a million dollars, which we're gonna talk about probably a little bit more later. These sort of things add up and they can quickly run down the amount of, of free funding that we have.
So, so, so. But we're trying to throw out suggestions and I get it. Let's get to where we need to get tonight so that we can move forward.
So the most simple way to get out of this is, is to, to tell the DLGF that we're gonna bring in the interest. We're confident the treasurer is gonna agree with us. That solves that problem. We can come back and keep making revisions after the, the 1782 notice. But like, we have to tell them something, otherwise they'll just order the cuts. If we tell them, hey, we've identified this other source of revenue, we're pretty confident in it. It's very realistic based off of calculations. They'll take that as a yes. We're good to go for now.
And I make a motion, we increase the investments to 2.67. Is it that simple?
Well, no, we have, but we have.
But he said it's a total 2.67.
Yeah, but we have 200 coming from workman's comp and we have 300 from the highway side.
We may not need to increase it quite that much.
He's saying we might.
So, and then if we did the other cross.
Don't be spooky. Come on, Randy.
Need a Snickers bar.
Yeah.
Coach.
I'll take.
We'll run out in a minute. But, I mean, we already, we already talked about some small thing.
500,000 of that is investment, so.
Well, I wasn't even, no, if I, if I take it, we're at 1.87.
So come up with a number and then I'll make a motion.
1.9 would, should cover everything.
Increasing from 200,000 to 2.1 million.
Yes.
Wow.
That's my motion.
It's ambitious.
That we'll take lobbying of the treasurer on some of our parts.
Absolutely.
The alternative is steeper cuts elsewhere.
Absolutely.
So. Savings are high.
So we're including, we're including a reduction to the workman's comp insurance. We're including the savings. We're, we're also stating that this year, our new balance.
Do you want me to run through the spreadsheet and I'll run through all the numbers? Make it a motion.
Run through the spreadsheets. He's ready to make, he's already made a motion, but let's go through, put it in.
We're just gonna inject this into his motion. Okay, so this is, run through this. We got 802,177 dollars that the DLGF ordered in cuts. We have 260, so that's negative. We got 266,725 dollars, 266725 in uncollected property tax revenue, or under collected, I should say. We got, hold on a second. Gotta edit this a little bit here. I rounded this number. 1,635,058 dollars, that's the transfer of levy to the health fund. We got, and this is an estimated number of additional income, but it's a safe number of 300,000 dollars in highway department auction revenue. So that's plus 300,000. We got 200,000 savings in workman's comp, so that's plus 200,000. We have our 3% reduction to the 9.8 million dollars of funds or expenses that Councilman Karanka identified as potentially able to be cut. That works out to 294,000. That's a plus number. And that leaves us with.
I wanna go back and revisit something before we.
Absolutely. We need to do, sorry, we're working on the flag here.
Probation. I wanna know.
1.9, one, sorry, 1.91 million in additional interest revenue.
During the current year.
That we're identifying.
Top of the 200 that's.
Yep.
Already there.
And, and that, my number may need tweaked by the auditor's office just a little bit. So I leave a little bit of flexibility in that motion just in case we identify we're off by a little bit. Because that brings us down to like 40 dollars as the estimated year end balance.
But I, I wanna add one more thing.
Yep.
I wanna take a look, another back, I wanna go back to take a look and I'm sorry, it's, which one? It's juvenile service center and I'm sorry that they're not here. But we know that the income, this is why I need your help, okay? We know, can you take a look and see where we are with their income from the?
Can you compare deposits from this year to last year?
Well, if we know what the deposits were this year, we'll take a look at where we are budgeting because we're already in December. So, so that would be very helpful for us to see if we can increase our revenue from juvenile.
Into the general.
Not juvenile probation, juvenile service center.
Service.
So that would be account 02050, from what I understand, is JSC reimbursement?
Yes.
Which reporter are you looking at?
A different one.
So I know what I'm looking for.
Cash flow statement that came in the back of our packet.
Got it.
Which file is that in?
Sorry.
Actually, it's.
It's in the middle of report, so there's a signation.
I, I will still watch. JSC reimbursement year to date, 2 million dollars, right? Mr. Joe, come on.
I think, while she's doing that, as far as the interest goes, I think the right number to use to calculate what we would earn in interest next year, which is really my professional opinion as a finance person, is the average daily, and I know the CD is coming off or whatever, but just as a ballpark, the average daily balance that we have, you know, we had, the average daily balance, what the current Trust Indiana rate is, less 50 basis points, less one half, 1% because the markets are predicting the future, the Fed's gonna start lowering rates by maybe mid-year or what have you, so. Anywhere from 50, the markets are gonna go down and the, the interest will go down. But I think that that would be a good, a good, a good figure, which is our average daily balance times, you know, current interest rate less maybe three quarters of a percent. And what that annual interest income would be.
I don't know.
Probably the most honest figure that we would have, have. That's calculable. We just need to get that balance.
So if we assume a 70 million dollar average daily cash balance, we're gonna.
That sounds high, but, but we, but, yeah.
I built in a little bit of a buffer, which was that I'm assuming that we're investing 70 or 80% of that, which works out to 56 million. If we take the average current daily yield for Trust Indiana, which is 5.39%, we take off.
Even if you took off.
Half a percent.
Four and a half.
Even if you took, even if you took one.
Four and a half percent, say.
So that would get us a yield of 2.7 million.
2.7?
Roughly.
Four and a half percent times 56 million?
So we don't need to make any cuts?
No, well, I'm trying to find, I'm trying to find another way to do it.
Sorry, 2.52 million.
2.52 million, okay.
Let me ask you this.
Okay, because in the report, and if I could just, just to carry on the spurt, sorry about that. In, in this report here, reading all the way across, it looks like the total, and this is just a cash flow statement, so I, and we've got 2 million. So to me, that's almost like the 2 million of, like.
We do have, so far this year is 2,38,343 dollars.
And then our 1782.
So that's the revenue.
Partially.
That we've collected this year. And so we have 1.4, I'm looking at this in, in the R414, which we were gonna look at before. Remember? You asked her to look at that. Did you get, were you able?
Yes, for it.
Were you able to take a look?
We don't know what else is in there.
I'm sorry.
I got, I got in, but I need, I do not have that number. I can't.
That's fine. So, but we have 1.4 million on, on this report.
I can check with S.
We have 2 million and it wasn't at full rate because I was several months behind in pay.
But is that?
Even if we don't argue that, forget that it might be more, we don't say it's gonna be 2 million next year. Maybe we go from 1.4 to 1.8. And so there's another 400,000 dollars that we're taking pressure off of somewhere else. And maybe we don't go crazy on the 294,300 cut.
Includes.
Maybe, I mean, maybe, because I can tell you the nightmare to enter those cuts is gonna be, is gonna be a problem, problematic, timing wise. Not like it's a terrible thing, but it's one thing to enter all the information.
Increase the revenue by 400 grand.
Yep. And then remove the 294.
And pull the cuts that Mr. Karanka.
That's if other people agree to it, but that's the idea is to, because I'm thinking the input on that alone.
We do believe, looking at these numbers here, I got a, a bank statement. I, I think that number is a very solid number, that, that 2.4 million interest, because we earned just in our sweep account, 700,000 dollars through, through May 31st of 2023. So, and that month of, that's five months out of the 12. That month of June is, is pre-settlement, where we got a lot of money. So I think you'd, you'd have 800, 900,000, you know, that's a 3, that's a 3%. So four and a half percent is 50% more interest. So the quick numbers are, you, you get up to about 2.5 million dollars than the number that we came up with. And I think that's, I think that's a reasonable number, that, that number, based upon looking at our, our sweep account.
And I'm, I'm also thinking, what if we just use the 3% just to see where we are with numbers? Does 3% get us there so we don't bring it?
Well, then you're looking at probably 1.8, 1.9 million.
Well, I guess, well.
I'm just, I'm just trying to find a balance everywhere so we're not applying too much pressure one place and, and not enough.
So Justin and I and Adam were talking, with the juvenile center, on, on, on the income report that we have, it has, it's showing that we brought in 2 million dollars this year.
Yes, and last year was only 554, so that is a big difference.
Because they, the state mandated a higher.
I know why, I'm just saying, so that's unexpected, yes.
So, but all we plugged into the 1782 was 1.4.
That's exactly.
Including all.
Yeah.
Services that we collect fees on.
We could not simply increase it.
Juvenile center. So we should be able to increase that by 600,000 dollars.
I don't know if I'd go the full amount, but I think, yeah, you could increase it.
If.
400,000?
1782 reflects other departments besides just the juvenile center.
Then you have the 2 million plus, plus whatever.
We don't know how much the other stuff is. Rhonda, are you able to split out what that?
We're digging out of a hole today.
Yeah.
I mean, we could sit down and obviously next year's budget's gonna take a lot more.
Well, we're.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's increase it by 400,000, 500,000. What do you feel comfortable with?
Do you wanna go to the full 2,600,000 increase? And then do you, let them think for a second here.
What about reassessment?
2015 reassessment?
Is that an issue?
They'll have sufficient funds.
For one year, we'll.
Next year, we're gonna have to look at it more.
We, we can, how much do you fix, how much do you fix that to? And then, I mean, we're throwing around some big numbers that we could do it. We might be able to fix it.
I think we got it covered. It's just a matter of figuring out what we wanna apply to it.
And an ongoing task next year is gonna be making sure these revenues meet.
This isn't a long-term fix. This is.
Started in January.
Yeah.
Mr. Keel?
Yes.
The total reimbursements that we had on the, on the submittal to the state, 1.4.
Yep.
1.4. So I, if, if each of you turn to your cash flow statement, there's a back-up.
This is nice. Tiny print.
Yes, tiny print. I'll walk you, just if you'll follow me down.
I'm sure you can see it from there, right?
If you can follow me down with left margin, I see reimbursement to child support.
Or the, probably going in.
This is all general.
Oh, this is general, right.
Uh, miscellaneous receipt reimbursement, postage reimbursement for 160 dollars, and then JSC reimbursement.
That's the.
I'm looking at 4.6.
So it would, I think it would be very safe to take that to 2, 6, increase it by 600,000.
Assuming that I'm understanding these correctly.
And I also, you take a look at the beginning months. And yeah, give or take, they may not have youth there, but the beginning months are really payments for the prior year, the first three months of the year. And then you see how they went up to 250, over 200,000 on the average. And then I don't see a payment yet for December. We probably won't get that till January anyway at this point in time. So I'm, I'm fine with going 2 million. I'm fine with a 600,000 dollar increase.
I think I'm fine with that as well. I would just point out, if you're looking back at the 1782 or the Form 4B, there's a couple other miscellaneous revenue items that we don't really know what they're for. I don't, off the top of my head, like other charges for services, sales and fees, earning, or no, refunds and reimbursements.
That building department, over minutes.
Hmm, I think there's another line item for that.
Refunds and reimbursements, too many.
So, no, not that one.
But if we're just looking at the.
So I just, it's hard to say where those revenues that we're looking at on the cash flow statement, it's hard to tell where they're matching up in the miscellaneous revenues. That would be a subject for further investigation.
I will tell you, SEH figures those for us because they do the budget. But starting this year, I am gonna learn each step so that it's not, they're gonna still do it, but so that we can confirm that.
We like it.
It'd also be good to get the trail of where we start and where it ends. So, I mean.
And where we think it's going.
No, no, I'm just talking about what account goes into what bucket. So, which is what you're talking about sitting through.
So.
And I'd be happy.
Just learning each.
Run the numbers again, Justin.
Run them again. Okay, so basically simplest switch here is.
So now we can, now we can give us a, nevermind.
Simplest switch here is to change the amount of interest revenue, additional interest revenue, and to add in this, the amount that we're expecting from juvenile services under federal, state and local reimbursements for services. So we add 600,000 there and we subtract 600,000 from the interest revenue, which would bring that down to 1.31 million.
What did you go with on interest income?
1.31.
Okay, so interest income?
Yeah. Up to 200,000.
The idea, the idea is.
It's too low.
It's the idea, I thought we were going, no, but the idea is maybe we take away the cuts.
Well, but you, you also, but that's not taking away the cuts.
No, he didn't take away the cut.
Yeah, do you want me to take those out?
Well, you got the 200,000 savings in work comp.
Yep, 300.
The 300,000 dollars from the scrap.
Yep.
So where's that put us now?
Now, do you want to pull out the 294?
Yeah.
Pull that off.
Pull that off? Okay, then we need to.
Putting it back up there.
Okay, that makes the interest income 1.604.
To, to put us at zero.
Yes, we're really close to zero.
That's, I think that's a very safe place to be. We, 200,000 dollars in savings.
To build our general fund.
And workman's comp, 300,000 dollars in the revenue that we brought in from there. We're not having to ask the departments to make cuts at this point. Obviously, we're gonna hit them hard next year during budget times.
And we might even be hitting them throughout the year even.
Right, and.
Oh, I'm gonna tell him.
Then we're good.
For this here.
That's my motion.
Do we want to do anything?
Who was that, Earl?
Do, do we want to do anything with the, the assessor's office, the 201 fund, 2015 reassessment?
He spends a lot of that money on stuff that we need.
I know he does, but, but he, but he's been cut. His rate was cut. So the question is, do we transfer some of our rate over, the general fund rate over? And then increase, and then increase interest income.
The assessor. How much do we need to make up?
One second.
I'm trying to accomplish a lot of.
We're gonna install a giant chalkboard up here so we can draw a big picture so everybody can see what.
I like this idea.
The white, the whiteboards that they have in school now.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
What about the amount of the liability insurance? I don't think we increased that budget this year, did we?
Yeah, yeah.
We did.
We, we put down 2 million dollars for their insurances.
Can you double check that while we're discussing 2015 reassessment?
Because I remember, I remember when we finished off the commissioners at the last meeting, just before the end, we put down the 2 million and, and change, and they broke it down for us. We also had a discussion, we were gonna use the workman's comp line. And then we found out we don't use the workman's comp line.
Never been.
And everything had to be used in the other, the other line.
I would suggest we use the workman's comp line next year just for transparency.
Well, we'll.
We can create it.
We can, we can get into that, yeah.
Yeah.
One other thing, workman's comp would be paid out of the workman's.
I wouldn't argue that. I wouldn't, I would not argue that.
I agree.
Yeah, since it'll all be in the general next year. Give me a minute.
Come on, where we at, Justin?
2015 reassessment. Estimated 2023 year-end cash balance, 643,000. We are anticipating we would bring in 625,000 in property tax levy, minus 71,000 roughly for circuit breaker. They have 39,000 of other miscellaneous revenues. So their total revenue that they'll be bringing in is 593, total expenditures, 960. So.
But where were they a year ago? I don't mind using up a little bit of savings. I just don't want to be wiping it out as fast as we're wiping it out.
Tell you, once we look at the 2023.
I don't even remember which sheet.
I believe he's paying for employees out of there. He is.
Yeah.
And he's done a tremendous job of cutting employees over here.
Absolutely, yeah, yep. They're the ones.
They even share employees. There's a good example of, one of the things we should be looking at is sharing employees and. Mike Schultz has been tremendous about doing that in the past. He's got peak seasons and slow seasons like most of the other departments. Him and the treasurer share. We should have lots of departments.
And the other.
Same thing.
Last year, last year, we spent, in 2015 reassessment, we spent 900, or 697,000 dollars more than we brought in, roughly.
So he's been depleted year over year.
He was significantly depleting it. Now, as part of this process, Rhonda was trying to tweak that. We boosted the levy a little bit more so that we didn't have this problem. Because it can't be that severe or we'd run out of money.
So, we've already boosted the levy on?
We already boosted it a little bit?
A little bit, yeah.
I thought it went down again. Oh, you know what? The, the rate is not the money.
Levy.
You have to, when, right?
I mean, looking, last year was 388, this year, 625.
Oh, so we already boosted it. I think we need to boost another 300 and just increase the.
So is it safe?
He's, he's estimated to end this year with 276,000 in the bank.
Instead of being a.
I don't know that that's danger zone, given all, all the other problems we got to deal with.
Been ending anywhere between 5 and 800,000, which I know he considered investing it as well, which, you know, every little bit helps, but.
So we'll leave, where the idea is leave it alone. We'll, again, another item to.
Will just have to be looked into next.
Well, I have to look in each one of them.
Is there anything else we need to touch on the 1782?
I don't think so. I feel really sorry if whoever has to write this up in a minute.
Correct me, so feel free to chime in. My motion then is for the 200,000 savings in the workman's comp. 300,000 dollars for the, what we took in from the sale out of the highway department.
That's increasing the current year.
Increasing the Juvenile Center for the miscellaneous.
Miscellaneous revenue.
To, by 600,000, taking it up to 2 million. And then the balance, which, give me a number on that, would be.
1.604 million for interest income that we need to make.
Correct. That's my motion.
With a little bit of wiggle room in there, because we don't know.
We.
These numbers may become a little bit more refined as we get closer.
You want that in the motion?
Yes, wiggle room.
Wiggle. I added it. It's my motion.
Not to exceed 100,000 in April.
Maybe a little.
We will decide how it's documented. Oh, sorry, just gonna be.
Snickers bar, right there, buddy.
Before.
All right, that's a motion.
Yeah.
Okay, second.
We have, we have a motion and second, I would have stepped down to second.
I can't believe it's been stated on all.
Okay.
They must be bored.
Any further discussion? Do we want to do a roll call on this or just do, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any nays? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Do you need a Snickers?
One, one question related to this.
Oh, no, no, no.
It's, it's, it's. If we were to find out.
We still have more to do.
If we were to find out from State Board of Health that, that we didn't need to move that 1.6 million in levy over there, would we want to revisit this?
Let's, we'll have the same flows after you notice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then we'd have to have another meeting to, to work that out, so.
You really have to have another meeting. I know you do.
Not going away for Christmas is making sure nobody else.
Councilman Rosenbaum?
Yes.
Just for the record, you are correct on the liability and the workman's comp, so thank you.
No, I appreciate, I just remembered talking it out because, which I know that we attempted to do the breakout and then we couldn't. Okay, we still have two things. We had moved down from the beginning and obviously we didn't need to touch this. So we have the insurance rate approval for 2024. So the insurance rate approval, we received two numbers today to be sure. And the first ones, which were at the same rate as the prior year. And is there, would anybody like to have any discussion on that? Or would we like to accept this and pass this?
I feel bad making employees pay more towards their health insurance, particularly when we're not giving them a raise. I mean, the cost is already going up because of just increases to cost of health insurance.
Which is, what is the, what is the increase? I'm hearing, I'm hearing numbers, but nobody's telling us.
Could you come up, please? And we've asked our interim HR director.
Craig with you.
And Craig, that would be great, thank you for staying.
Don't want you to feel left out at this point.
We, we just didn't know where we were gonna go before, so we're glad we didn't have to do the worst case.
It's a good thing you didn't ask me how long this would take. I would have told you a fake number.
Good evening, Monique Thomas, interim HR director.
Craig Mundy, President, General Insurance.
So the, the question on the table from Councilman Keel was, what was the increase from the prior year of our overall, of the medical premiums? And I, I keep hearing something like 8.5%, but I.
It was roughly around 8.5%.
Yeah, correct.
So everybody has to pick up their 16% of that increase as well. So that's why we have these new rate tables. And so the new rate tables, unfortunately, I don't have a match compared to the prior year, so. This is the prior year.
Hi.
Okay.
What you have before you is the rates that were proposed from our original, what we originally proposed.
But this, but this is at the 15%?
Yes, yes.
Which we're not going any different.
Ones at 15, ones at 60.
Yep.
Yeah, we're not, and we need to do, oh, just in case.
Just need to approve the rate, approve the rate.
Yeah, so.
I think the question was overall, what was our increase, dollar amount?
So I, I have.
So this is a spreadsheet I put together crudely.
You're asking gross.
Gross, I agree with you. Really gross.
Yes.
So.
Do you want explanation, son?
The 8.5, the 8.5% increase is 981,000 dollars total.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
So 981,000.
981,000 dollars is the overall increase.
8.5% increase represents. So the budget presently, now this is based upon current enrollment, that fluctuates. 11.5 million is the current year budget. Next year would be 12.5, change. So the cover rates then include the 8.5, right?
As a reminder, we did not increase the appropriation in our budget for employee health insurance. So it's at the same level it was this year.
Yep, we'd only be playing games.
And the savings from the clinic, is that?
Yeah, so it's, again, we save money, folks, use that particular on the prescriptions. The plan should be running about, just about a million dollars better than expected, based on our.
Did you say should be?
Yes.
Should be, or that means that roughly is running at that.
Yes.
Savings.
Which is prescription rebates.
Okay.
Is really the difference there. Roughly a million dollars of prescription rebates would be the positive budget variance I'm referencing.
If you don't mind for a second, Ms. Graves, would you look up the current cash balance for the employee health insurance fund? I can't remember the fund number.
It's not on.
Carry on.
So the more employees we get to go out, I mean, because I know there's still quite a few that don't.
Right, right. Yeah, you're basically buying direct at a much preferred fee schedule through the, yeah, through the clinic. So, yeah, everyone wins by, obviously it doesn't cost the employees anything and the county saves. Because versus running that through Magellan, where you're gonna pay a higher rate.
Right.
You can access it. You're, you're buying it direct.
Yeah, and.
I can't ask you to do this on the fly because it'd be probably too much. But would you be able to come back at a future meeting and explain to us the whole overview of our employee health insurance so that all of us in the council understand how it works? Looking at things like, how much do we appropriate, what's the savings from the clinic?
Next year.
Yeah, something like that. Give the whole picture of how it works.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure what you appropriate. We just come with, here's what the, right, the, the projections are from the actuaries and.
What's the percentage of use estimated?
Of employees that use it?
Use the health plan.
I would say roughly around anywhere between 500 to 550 employees, so that was.
Out of 800, full-time employees?
Out of 700. We have 720 full-time employees.
720?
Yes, so out of that, I would say at least probably more than half of them that use it.
Now, that was use of the, the overall versus use of the clinic. I want to make sure the question that you asked. No, 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 Mr. Cunningham, you asked her just overall, people, number of people that take advantage.
Right.
You mean the clinic or you just?
No, no, the insurance is, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Of the clinic.
The use of the clinic.
Oh.
Oh, we have roughly close to about 200 people that use it per month.
Okay.
That's per.
So do we have, do we have an estimate of what percentage of the county employees have not used the clinic? Is it 25 or 30% have never been there, just refused to go?
That'll be hard to tell because they have, we have dependents that could use it as well.
Which is good. I mean, we, we're ensuring the dependence.
Yes.
On the family plan.
Yeah, and that's not, and that's common for clinics. There's kind of a hockey stick. It take, right, changing behavior takes some time. Additionally, North Shore, your clinic partner, is building out an access point in Michigan City presently.
Right.
So I suspect you have a lot of employees in Michigan City that it's inconvenient to come to La Porte.
When do they anticipate that'll be?
March or April. Yeah, and it's gonna be up on the north end.
I agree with Mr. Keel. I think it will be very valuable for you to come in and make a presentation together because some of our healthcare costs could be driven down by using the clinic and the prescriptions. And I think it'd be a good sale to all the employees.
Exactly.
Especially when we're looking at increasing their healthcare or cutting budgets to balance this, this would, this would come in handy.
And in the vein, as you're preparing for this presentation, if you think of creative ways that we can try to reduce costs by like driving up participation in the, the employee clinic, feel free to write them down and tell us.
Yeah. Yeah, and we do, from that perspective.
I should go through the insurance.
Management meetings, yeah, I mean, we've got a strategic plan built out for the benefits plan. So yeah, we're, we're constantly making those types of, and this would lead to the clinic. So yeah, it would, we would want to coordinate with North Shore, some of their officials to come and share. But yeah, and they'll be happy to, to dig into details.
Ms. Graves, do you have a balance, I think, for us?
Yes, the current balance of the Employee Health Insurance Fund, 4701,
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So is our motion to, is there any more discussion or we ready to make a motion?
Last question, discussion. Do you guys get anything, can sit down? I don't, I don't think we're done, right, with these guys?
Unless you have a question for them?
Been dismissed by Mr. Cunningham. No, I'm not dismissed. I just don't have a question for them. I don't want them to have to stand there and tolerate my question.
Well, they've been sitting for free, huh? They're probably okay.
Happy to stand up, happy to stand up, stretch your legs.
Thank you.
What, we keep talking about this 700,000 dollars we got in different funds. What percentage of that is currently invested? Or what percentage is currently not invested? Can you answer either one of those questions?
Well. Their main bank account is Horizon Bank 5, so. And the amount, you can talk to the treasurer about this, but I think it's the amount over, there's like 2 million or something that's kept in a, in a regular account for checking, but the rest of the excess is swept and earns the 3% interest. So in theory, the vast bulk of our funds are invested at 3% currently.
Everything except for that amount you said that it's.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that, that transaction part of the account, that's the checks are.
And the CD.
And the CD.
So this is based off of an email in July 18th from the treasurer that was sent to Mr. Karan, to Mr. Yagelski and myself. And at that time, the treasurer said that as of today, we've invested 15 million dollars in a six-month CD. So this is less duration than what I had said previously, with Horizon Bank at an interest rate of 5.2%. Presumably, the maturity of that is gonna be in January, since it was six months and they probably did it early July.
Okay, well, the difference between 700, invested at 5.2 with Trust Indiana and 10% is 0.5 dollars. I mean, that's a big chunk of change for what we're looking for here, folks. I mean, how, how can we not insist that this money gets invested at a higher rate? Because it's so, it's not a CD. Basically, they took a CD at a lower rate than Trust Indiana's paying on flexible money.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so we're back, oh, we're gonna pull ourselves back to the health insurance premiums, the, the rates?
Mostly maintain at the 15%.
Using the new schedule, so we're motioning to keep it at the 15% using the new schedule with the new increases as presented to us.
So there will be increases to all the employees.
Here it is.
Yep.
And just to give people an idea, it's, it's under 7 dollars if it's just the employee. This is if you have the 1,000 dollar deductible. It changes. I'm just taking one of the higher ones. 13 dollars if it's employee spouse and 12 dollars if it's employee child and family is 18 dollars per month.
Per paycheck.
This per paycheck, okay.
Per paycheck.
So that's the increase without doing anything, just maintaining the 15%. So thank you for that. Okay.
If it might be possible, could the, could HR maybe send that to employees so that they can plan accordingly and they understand? I mean, they shouldn't understand.
No, they're gonna, they're, she needed, she, she does that as soon as we do this. So, we're on the floor. Is there any further discussion? I'm sorry, who seconded it? Thank you very much. Okay. Just trying to get to the right spot. So on the floor, no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Here, my motion carries. Okay, we move on to what was added, the discussion of salary ordinance.
We did it.
No.
No, we didn't. The salary ordinance was just delivered to us while we were sitting here in our seats.
Ms. Graves, could you give a background about the creation of this document and just how we got here and kind of why we're getting it last minute, just so we all understand?
Sure. Yes, I think it was just last week or so that Auditor Sabels got a text that it needed to be done by today. So I did work till midnight every day last week. And this week, except for, oh, Friday, I did leave at 8:00, by the way. But to not overstate that, but, so I typed it up using a replica of Porter County's statute or salary ordinance that they made just because it looked nice. And it included more information than we have in the past that SBOA would like to see. And so payroll double-checked a lot of the numbers. They, they double-checked all of the numbers. I wrote everything to the Form 144s, which have definitely changed. So there still need to be some updates for salary. But otherwise, it's mostly there.
So we're like 95% of the way there?
Yes, the most important part is all of the elected officials, which have to be done before January, are definitely correct. So what I plan to do after tonight is to add the names, which SBOA would like to see. I do need to add the names of the part-timers and exactly what they make per hour, not just a range, which you'll see in there, for SBOA to like it better. And then there are a couple of departments who had told us they had no step changes next year, and they have quite a few step changes. So we need to get them to reply to us and get everything updated. But it doesn't affect any elected officials, which need to be approved before January.
So the reason I ask that this get put on the agenda tonight is in order to pass ordinances, you, in order to pass it in one meeting, you need unanimous consent. We would not have unanimous consent here tonight. Well, maybe, depends on how you interpret the statute.
Instead of who's here, you can't.
Maybe, maybe, yeah. If we introduce it this meeting and it's passed in a subsequent meeting, we've introduced it. The statutory requirements, we can then pass it without a majority of consent in a second meeting. So this is kind of a perfunctory matter to make sure we've introduced it.
Mr. Attorney.
Got your motion. Introduced.
Should the attached document be the 24 salary grid?
It is not the 24 salary grid because the, no pay changes happened.
But it's still for 2024.
It's for 2024, so we would think.
Yeah.
Because the.
The salaries are, we're using the grid. We're, he's talking about the grid, right?
It's adopted in 2023 for 2022.
Which page do you see this on?
He's talking about the pay grids that were adopted in 2022 for 2023, I believe, aren't you?
No, I'm just talking about the attachment should be the 2024 salary grid.
I agree. Because that's the salary. The thing inside the document is a 2024 salary grid. Which is equivalent to the.
We're using the 2023, yeah.
You are using, but it's the 24 salaries. You're paying people starting in January. So it's the 2024 salary grid.
So we need to have that. Is the, is the ordinance number correct?
Your number is correct too today, yes.
Yeah, it can, yeah, and then that's fine because we, we have our salary ordinance separate on our website.
So can I make a motion to read by title only?
Well, you're just introducing it.
What's that?
Technically, technically, we don't actually have to like.
Yeah.
Vote to do, to do a reading so much.
On the document, I'm just voting to.
No, you're just introducing it.
We just, so we've introduced it.
Yeah, ordinance 202312, an ordinance adopting county of LaPorte salaries and compensation. Just introduce.
What am I chopping here again? I'd like to make a motion to read by title only.
So it's introduced.
It's introduced.
Is there a second? We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. Please read by title only. Thank you.
Tim, this is your time to shut.
This is an ordinance adopting county of LaPorte, Indiana's salary schedule and compensation policies, 2024.
One other note, and perhaps Ms. Graves can kind of elaborate on this. Some, the form that this salary ordinance in is, is, is different than in the past. Can you, yeah, in the, okay, you said.
Oh, no, I thought.
She mentioned it.
I said that I did it based on Porter County, but one of the reasons.
It also breaks out, which we didn't have before the breakout.
Also, because of the way that we used to do it from payroll, it will include the vacant positions. And that's what payroll did not, was not able to include in the form.
Also, because this is in Excel, when we go to try and calculate raises later, this will be immensely easier to, to come up with accurate calculations.
Yeah, it's going to be 2024.
Okay.
I think that's all I have.
Yeah.
Okay, we have done that. We have counsel and attorney comments. Would anybody like to make a comment? We'll start on one end and go the other way. So Mr. Cunningham, please.
With the Alex problem that we had last December and the process we've gone through, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the following people. One of them is Kenny Layton and his, I don't even remember who they were, but they established the Randy Day Fund. When we first got the Riverboat money, they established that account. And where would we be today without it? And that's over 25 years ago they did that. And then the last year that's been spent working through the problems with the renovation. I would like to thank Andy Skiat, Attorney Guy D. Martino and Randy Novak for the additional work they've had to do on that project. Thank you.
We've been here long enough. I won't have any comments.
I just want to know back. My usual statement, but John Schaefer, who used to be the city controller in Michigan City, passed away. And I came straight from his funeral today. So he was a, a really good guy, CPA and everything like that. So keep him and his family at prayers. And we already did with Joey's husband, just a very sad situation, so.
Mr. Karanka?
Merry Christmas to everybody. I'll assume that we're not coming back.
You can say Merry Christmas safely.
Merry Christmas.
With regard to the budget discussion we had tonight, I'd like to thank everybody for coming to the table with a lot of suggestions and a lot of hard work that happened, you know, at the last minute through here when we started looking at different sources of cost. But for years going forward, we still, you know, we've, we may have avoided the situation for 2024 potentially. But now we need to continue. What are we going to do to rebuild what we have for available revenue to get to some level of 20, you know, approaching a 20% cushion in all the affected accounts? And how do we do that? But let's continue forward.
You're done. Mr. Mullin now.
I just want to wish everybody a merry Christmas also and encourage everybody. I think I mentioned at our last month's meeting on how beautiful the courthouse and all the surroundings look and encourage people out there to come up there and take advantage of them before they, before, I imagine they'll come down right after New Year's, probably usually the last week there, or the first week of January. So come up there, they, they look more beautiful this year, I think, than ever before. Thank you.
I just want to add to, echoing on what Adam said about the budget. We can't, more than three of us cannot meet at any given time to discuss these things and make decisions. So this is, this is where it gets done. So we apologize that it took so long, but I mean, this is very important. And it's not like, oh, how come you guys didn't figure that out before you got up there? Because I think everybody had little ideas and.
They all got to watch the sausage get made.
Right.
Did you have any comment, attorney?
No, sir, thank you.
All right, I have, I'm going to take a few minutes, so it's not going to be too long. Besides Merry Christmas, those are people selling Hanukkah, Happy Hanukkah. And for those who we won't see, it may be the start of Kwanzaa before that. We also still need to set a date for our, I'm sorry, for our.
Reorganization.
Reorganization meeting, Monday is the first. So the question is, do we want to do it on a Tuesday night? And if it's available, possibly to do that that quickly? I don't know. What's that?
January 8.
January 8th sounds better because that's when people will be back. Okay, so let's look to see if we can set it up for January 8th. To get off the topic.
January 8th at 6 o'clock?
I hope so, yeah, yeah.
I mean, are we going to make a decision?
Yes, would everybody agree?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay, we got it going there. Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate if you can, the office would set that up for us. Make sure the room's available. The other part about this budget, you heard a little bit from us and, and this is more for anybody who's going to read the, listen to the recording or hear about it because this place is empty. There are a lot of things done in the past where we just relied on other funds to pay for things. And this was the year we couldn't do that anymore. And so what we did, we started writing the process this year as we were going through budget by budget, department by department. We had to increase the expenditures for these things that were always coming back to us. There's no reason to, to, to play games with the rate. We have to know what the real costs are for this county, especially since inflation hit us in the past couple of years pretty hard. So that was one of the big things. And so therefore, we, we got to a position of, of having higher costs than what we would have liked it been. But they're not phantom. And as you hear us talk, we have some other issues that we've learned about that we're going to have to deal with next year. But if we didn't deal with these and we had those on top of it, we'd never get through 2024 financially. So we, we, we made some decisions early on that made a big difference. What you saw tonight was pretty incredible with a lot of people throwing our ideas out and working together. We've had, everybody's had these little conversations, one here, one there. We talk about this thing, we talk about that thing. And one of the, the nice things about it is often everybody wanted to be more conservative about the investment income than what we showed tonight. And so that was a, a really satisfying thing to see people opening, you know, being very open to all of the different suggestions and also working to not hurt anybody, any of the departments that we sat here and we went through those budgets, the budget, department by department. Another thing I want to add, it has been a, it, it feels like it's been a very long year, the first time in a presidency. Sometimes mistakes are made. Sometimes, you know, you just learn and sitting here.